Alright. Every year Burr Elementary families host a wonderful Diwali celebration and a Day of the Dead celebration jointly. And I was sad to miss this year, but it's so lovely to see the many ways that our community comes together to celebrate the diversity and the richness of our cultures. So just prior to tonight's meeting, the school committee convened our annual leadership caucus to determine the selection of our chair and vice chair for next year. We were joined by two new incoming school committee members. I'm not quite sure if they're in the room. However, our members-elect Amy Davenport from Ward 7 and Barry Goldstein from Ward 8 were able to join us tonight. And let me take this opportunity on behalf of the committee to publicly congratulate them and welcome them aboard and thank them for the service that they are soon to render to our community and our district. During the caucus, Chris Bresky was selected as the chair of the committee and Emily Prender selected as the vice chair of the committee effective January 1st. It is my profound hope that our new leadership team continues to ensure that we are a high-functioning, collaborative team inviting the thoughtful exchange of ideas and a deep respect for our staff, our students, and our community. We will now jump right into our meeting and begin with something that brings a lot of joy every year that we get to experience it. Former Newton superintendent Irwin Blummer is in the chamber. And so that must mean that it is time for a perennial favorite, the presentation of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's, Massachusetts Association of School Committee's Academic Achievement and Blummer Book Awards. This award is presented to several deserving and accomplished students from both Newton North and Newton High Schools. Irwin, please do take the mic. Absolutely. Just grab one of them.
So if I could just say first, this is a great honor for me also because Dr. Blummer was my professor 20 years ago when I started training to be a principal. And he was appointed as my mentor when I was first, a brand-new superintendent. So this is wonderful to be back on your turf, which is now my turf, which is our turf, to celebrate these young people before us.
Well, thank you. First of all, let me just say it's a pleasure to come back here and do this every year. I mean, some of the, what the students here are able to achieve are absolutely mind-boggling. And it's just a pleasure to see. It's not only academics, it's everything else that they do, all the other ways that they contribute to the community. It's really special. So I have, this year, chosen to give a book by Geraldine Brooks called Horse. It's a novel. It's historical fiction about a supposedly the greatest racehorse that ever existed in the United States. But the story really isn't about the horse. It's about a slave who trained the horse to greatness. And it operates on two levels. You see the racism that the young man had to face as he was doing the training of the horse. And then there's a contemporary piece where a black art history doctoral student finds a picture of the horse and then he decides he wants to find out exactly what the horse is all about. He worked with a woman who was a quote-unquote "bone specialist" at the National Museum of Science. And unfortunately, you also see the racism that continues to exist in contemporary United States. So I enjoyed the book. I thought it was very well-written, and I hope that the students do as well.
Thank you, Dr. Blummer.
So I have the honor of letting you know the young people to whom this book is being given and also the Massachusetts Superintendent Association Award as well that accompanies it, which goes to students of this caliber who've been chosen by the superintendent with the help of her team. So obviously, the leadership at the high schools. So Principal Turner is here. Principal Strauss has a sick child and sick husband, so she's on mom duty tonight. But she's here with us in spirit, and their teams have all helped us to choose these wonderful people, and I cannot wait to tell you about them. So let me tell you about our first recipient, Shira Lebron. Shira's former English teacher described her as "loving, brilliant, and hard-working", as the first words that come to describe her. I would consider that a great parenting achievement, Lebron's, if that is the case. She's a student leader in discussing inclusivity and educating classmates about ableism. She's described by peers as "down-to-earth, having strength of character, natural leadership ability, has modesty and a humble nature, all while she takes on studies deeply and explores the world passionately." She is the co-president of the Jewish Student Union and put together a Semester Abroad program for herself in Israel demonstrating an intense focus, moving this project ahead in a way that is not typical for most students. She is playing a significant role in organizing Jewish Culture and History Day at Newton North as the JSU co-president. She is passionate about representing Jewish students in response to antisemitism at North in the past and currently. And she is helping to pave the way for us to all fight antisemitism. She volunteers at Gateways, Access to Jewish Education, which is a Hebrew school for children with disabilities, which she finds deeply meaningful. She's a gifted writer. She is a contributor to The Newtonite, Newton North's online student newspaper, and she has served as the sports managing editor for the last four years. She says that The Newtonite has challenged her and pushed her in ways outside of her academic experience, such as helping her to deal with a variety of different people outside of the school, teaching her to be a better writer, and to think more objectively. And in her spare time, she's a member of the Newton North varsity Nordic ski team, the varsity ultimate frisbee team, the STEM mentors club, the Climate Collective, the Jewish Student Union co-president, and Theater Inc peer support. She's a one-of-a-kind young woman according to her guidance counselor and has so much to offer the world as she has already offered to Newton. Congratulations. Our next recipient is from South High School. And this young person, her name is Taban Malahi, Malih, sorry, Taban Malih, who is wise beyond her years according to her guidance counselor. She's curious and enthusiastic and a leader. Indeed, her biology teacher was inspired to start a book club for her so that Taban could enjoy reading more about biology and scientific history. Taban has sponsored Senate bills or helped to create Senate bills, including a holiday bill and a prayer room, bringing light to religions that have been overlooked in our community. She has also created a resource for queer members of the Mina community. Taban wants to make a positive impact not just within our school system, but in the world. She wants to bring injustice to light and fight for equality and freedom. As a social justice youth leader, she has researched social justice history and theory. She has shown a desire to learn history, to change the present and the future. She is extremely self-aware according to her teachers. She makes time for self-reflection and to figure out where she feels she needs to grow and set goals. She has taken advantage of a rigorous course load and maintained a 4.0 GPA. Loves being out in the environment, any environment that encourages inquisitive learning. Along with awards in math, science, English, and Latin, Taban earned the Whipple Award for Excellence in Research from High School Journal of Law and Society. She's the National Merit Scholarship semifinalist. She won the Congressional Award Gold Medal and was awarded the Dear Asian Youth Prism Activist Scholarship. She is a founder and president of the Meswana Coalition at South, and she has inspired a call to action for members and developed an anti-racist curriculum for the French program. Her commitment to help others is shown in her community service work as well. She's a leader on the debate team and has become a confident speaker. She earned an outstanding distinction with National Speech and Debate Association, a Massachusetts State Championship in Debate, and second place at the Harvard International Forensics Tournament. This year, having completed AP French, which is the end of our French sequence, she has become a teaching assistant in French. She also takes introductory Arabic at the Harvard Extension School and aspires to take additional courses in AP Psych, AP Chemistry, and AP Calculus BC. She is emblematic of leadership and scholarship of the Newton Public Schools. Congratulations. I had the pleasure of meeting our next recipient at the South Lights unveiling recently. And this is Suvi Talviati. I don't think that sound spelling is correct, but Suvi, you'll forgive me on that note. Suvi is a hard-working, intellectually curious, and enthusiastically engaged student. Throughout high school, she challenged herself by taking more AP and honors classes each year. She was recently named a commended student by the National Merit Scholarship Program for her outstanding performance on the PSAT. Suvi has utilized our elective course offerings to explore passions and enhance her problem-solving skills. She shares that she especially enjoys computer programming and robotics as they enable her to marry both interests in art and science. She is a natural leader as described by her guidance counselor. Her leadership is motivated by a desire to help and teach others. During COVID, when few clubs were limited, she began to pursue certain interests such as organizing two new clubs, Archery Club and Beginners Lift. These clubs reflect her areas of passion and her eagerness to share skills with others. Suvi feels confident working out in the weight room at South and is not intimidated by others being there. And recognizing that sometimes her female peers wanted to learn about weightlifting but were uncomfortable learning alongside male peers, she organized a girls-only lift group. It's been a great success and has inspired confidence and new skills among her female peers. Suvi was also one of the students who organized the Purple Day for Domestic Violence at South that was held this fall. Suvi loves the outdoors and challenging her athletic abilities. In addition to being an avid skier, she also enjoys hiking and has set a goal to hike all 4,000 footers in New Hampshire and has completed nine so far. This summer, she participated in a two-and-a-half-week backpacking trip on the Appalachian Trail, during which she hiked a 100-mile wilderness trail and submitted Mount Katahdin, the highest mountain in Maine. Suvi is eager to join and participate in an outing club if it's offered at college. "There's a refreshing self-assuredness about Suvi that attracts people and makes others feel comfortable in their own skin," says her counselor. "She is unapologetically herself, is humorous and down-to-earth. Her confidence is evident in her sense of humor and style. For example, Suvi has an extensive collection of t-shirts with funny sayings on them." We'll just give you one. "For instance, in her own words, she says that she periodically wears her periodic table t-shirt for chemistry tests." Suvi's academic prowess and success reflect high expectations and her unmatched self-discipline. She is also on the cross-country team and has challenged herself to greater and greater goals within. She has a personal philosophy of mind over matter, and that mindset has a significant impact on how enjoyable, approachable, and manageable anything, including herself, can be in a situation. She is a highly capable and dependable student, naturally curious, and cared about within the South community. Her guidance counselor says that she has been pushed to understand more because Suvi has helped her to reflect and be curious. Suvi will bring energy and enthusiasm to whatever her next steps will be. She has her guidance counselor's highest recommendation. Congratulations." Our next recipient is a Newton North student, Jaden Grant, who is described as "a remarkable high school senior who has excelled in academic, extracurricular, and personal development in her time at Newton North." Her math teacher describes her as "intelligent and creative in mathematical thinking, someone who has had an unwavering commitment to pursuing the most rigorous course load available at school, consistently enrolled in honors and advanced placement courses, showing a thirst for knowledge and a dedication to excellence that is commendable. She is a role model in the classroom and in the broader community, demonstrating leadership and passion for learning that inspires her peers." One area where Jaden has truly distinguished herself is in the Architectural Drafting Program. Through this program, she has not only developed an impressive architectural portfolio, but has honed essential business skills. For example, her ability to lead teams and work closely with clients to deliver final projects is a testament to her talent and professionalism. She thrives at the intersection of creativity and technical expertise, and her dedication to projects is evident in the quality of her work. Jaden doesn't just limit her talents to the classroom. She has actively participated in a variety of extracurriculars, demonstrating balance in her rigorous academic schedule and her commitment to the community. She had a pivotal trip to Prague this summer where she embraced the opportunity to step out of a comfort zone, explore history, and immerse herself in architectural wonders. Furthermore, Jaden has been an integral part of the Dover Legacy Scholars Program, which fosters a sense of community among students. She speaks of this program as "a safe space where students of color can openly express their thoughts and feelings while forming connections with peers who share experiences." Her involvement in the program reflects her dedication to creating an inclusive and supportive environment for all. She has served as team captain for the track and field team and has devoted significant time and energy to the Women in STEM Club and the Gals Club, which is Girls Achieving Leadership Through Service, where she has organized events and fundraisers to benefit the community. Outside of school, Jaden has shown her strong work ethic by holding a job at a local ice cream shop and her ability to balance academic work, extracurriculars, and all that is being Jaden is a testament to her discipline and time-management skills. Congratulations, Jaden, an extraordinary student who has demonstrated consistent academic excellence and a commitment to school and the broader community. Congratulations. So our last student from North was actually the first student I met here in Newton because he helped me to put together a little jazz ensemble this summer. But he did that through, while he was away in India, so I think he was talking to me at like 2:00 in the morning. So just want to say publicly, I appreciated your support. So our award winner here is Surya Gopal, who single-handedly owns the title of the most credits earned of any student in his guidance counselor's 23-year career at Newton North High School. While most students earn a minimum of 243 credits in four years, Surya earned 300 before the year even began this year. So to say he has taken advantage of what the Newton School has to offer is a gross understatement. He is remarkable in this capacity. He also has a special level of self-awareness and honesty as evidenced by this statement that he told his guidance counselor. "What I want from college," he said, "is to have a strong education under my belt. I love learning. So through taking a diverse array of classes, I hope to just become a more knowledgeable, worldly person." He is a true intellect, and there is no trace of arrogance or superiority in his manner. He is a delight. Words that his English teacher used to describe him: "brilliant, passionate, and empathetic. He brings such power and presence to any class. He has an astute capacity to see all perspectives in literature we read, but directs his learning back towards his innate empathy and care for humanity. He goes out of his way to make classmates laugh, learn, and feel seen and heard." Surya is one of the loveliest students that his guidance counselor has ever worked with. To think about him, the words "creative, engaging, interesting, and funny" come to mind first. And we could talk about his interests for hours because he is just so knowledgeable and passionate without pretense and immense talent. He has a quirkiness about him that is endearing to all of us because he is completely unaware of how special he is. Sharing a quote from a recent conversation will illustrate this beautifully, along with the self-awareness I mentioned earlier. "In ninth grade, I was like any other freshman," Surya said, nervous, eccentric, and intimidated by the maze that was Newton North High School. And now I'm still many of those things, but I've also changed in so many ways since ninth grade. Diligent, innovative, inspired are additional words that other teachers have used to describe Surya and how he describes himself. I would say that he is also inspiring as well. He's a young man consistently open to learning about himself and how he approaches different situations. I came to know Surya because he is an adept musician, and his music teacher is someone I've known for a long time. Surya is currently working on his own original musical called Children of the Swamp, which tells the story of people affected by the flooding of the northern Karantaka region. Musically, the orchestration of the work is based on the E Street Band's celebration of Black American music in a theater setting. He plans to produce, direct, and present the work at Newton North later this year. He is a team player and an excellent musician, and we wish you well, Surya, and congratulate you on all your achievements.
Irwin, so one moment. If we could have all of the students line up here with Dr. Blummer and Superintendent Nolan, that would be wonderful, I think, to mark this lovely, lovely occasion. We'd quickly take a quick photo op. Thank you. Appreciate it. And congratulations to all of you. I'll give a couple of moments just for folks to shuffle, if you so choose. Give it one more minute. And if anyone would like to take a seat that was previously reserved, please do. Help yourselves. Okay, so let's continue on and we'll turn now to our public Okay, so let's continue on, and we'll turn now to our public comment period. This is a period reserved for members of the public to address the school committee and for the school committee to directly hear the concerns and your perspective. We do not respond in this context, but we will listen and seriously consider feedback. Scheduled conversations are available in alternate formats, and members of the public joining us in person must please refrain from applause, outbursts, or disruptions. Tonight, we have several requests for public comment, and we will try to accommodate them all within our allotted time. Remote speakers, actually, we don't have any remote speakers tonight, so I will skip that part. When called, in-person speakers, you will please come to the front of the table and take the microphone and state your name and address before beginning your remarks. Our vice chair, Kathy Shields, will give you a 30-second verbal warning prior to your time's expiration. And we will start tonight's public comment with, I believe you're sharing the time, is
Susan Cohen, 124 Mount Vernon Street, Newton.
Ryan Normandin, 4 Air Road, Boston.
When we began negotiations, both the NTA and the school committee were on board to settle the contract expeditiously.
But now, 15 months later, the community is voicing concerns about the prolonged negotiations. We want to ensure the community is aware that the school committee is using taxpayer money to pay the law firm Valerio Domenello &amp; Hillman LLC to advise them for the duration of negotiations with the Newton Teachers Association, which began in July 2022. This law firm is the same one that has represented at least six other Massachusetts school districts with protracted negotiations. This includes Brookline, which stretched on for two years, during which time an observer of negotiations described the lack of respect shown by this firm and the committee that hired them as appalling.
Ryan, I'm a Newton taxpayer. Can you tell me where the funds are coming from to pay this law firm?
Well, there are two budgets for this city, the city budget and the school budget. The funds don't seem to be from the city budget because the city council never doctored this item. Is this firm being paid from the school budget? It is not mentioned or discussed in the school budget documentation for fiscal year 2223 that anyone can find online. Under Massachusetts General Law Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 37E, money for outside council hired by a city or town cannot exceed $25,000, a limit which Newton has surpassed. Outside of city council, which has not approved anything, there's only one person who can authorize these ongoing payments, and that person is Mayor Ruth Ann Fuller. For the last 15 months, the Newton taxpayers have been footing the bill for Valerio's law firm without being informed, and not one of the five budget presentations is there a record of payment for these services, even under the category of legal services. So where would the public find the information regarding payments to this law firm?
So I have a question for Mayor Fuller and the school committee. Why did you feel the need to hire this firm for negotiations with Newton Educators? Were you all unaware of this firm's history of drawing out negotiations, which at times feel to me rather aggressive?
15 months ago, the school committee said they wanted to settle a contract quickly, but their actions suggest otherwise. What is the justification for spending taxpayer money from the school budget on a firm with a track record of dragging out negotiations? A firm that a Brookline teacher, who is observing negotiations, described as breeding ill-will and contempt? A firm that has no vested interest in our students, our families, our educators, and our community? Newton educators want nothing more than to end this contract dispute, but every day that you and the law firm you hired drag this out is another day that Newton taxpayers foot the bill for your intransigence.
Thank you very much for your time.
A reminder to our public comment audience, please refrain from applause. That will delay and severely compromise the amount of time that we've reserved for public comment. I appreciate that. Thank you. Up next, we have Allison Lebron. By the way, congratulations, Mom.
My name is Allison Lebron. I live at 83 Fairway Drive. I'm so glad to be here tonight. I'm proud of my daughter, who was presented with an award for academic excellence, and grateful to the many teachers who have worked with my children for the last 13 years with such care and devotion. That being said, I'd like to follow up on what my friends Ryan and Sue shared in their comments. As a Newton resident, I wholeheartedly disagree with the decision made by the school committee to hire the law firm Valerio Domenello &amp; Hillman LLC, a law firm with a history of prolonged contentious negotiations. These prolonged negotiations are driving a wedge between our teachers and the families they serve. As a Newton resident, I am angry that my tax dollars are paying for this lawyer. As a Newton resident, I am concerned about the lack of transparency surrounding this payment. I have no trust in a mayor who will pass a large sum of money, likely $400,000 or more, through the school committee. To me, that feels like a strategy to avoid the scrutiny of the city council finance committee and the broader community. As a Newton resident, I call on our school committee to stop wasting my tax money on an overpriced lawyer. It's enough. It's time to end these negotiations and give our teachers the contract they deserve so they can go back to serving our families in the way that both the families and the teachers desperately want. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Up next, we have Peter Hamel.
Hello, my name is Peter Hamel. I legally reside at 97 Newton Street in Waltham, but I live in Newton. I appreciate the chance to address the school committee, who I would love to think of as my partners in supporting the students of Newton. I began teaching at Newton North in 2004, and I immediately felt welcomed into a community where educators are valued. I was encouraged to get to know my students and develop creative strategies to help meet their needs. I loved teaching in this collaborative environment, and I was hooked. On the last day of school in June of my first year, I actually cried because I didn't want to leave Newton for two whole months. A few years later, when my wife Sarah and I decided to buy a home, we searched in the Newton area and settled on a house just over the line in Waltham. Since that time, while we sleep in Waltham, our roots have been working themselves firmly into the soil of Newton. Our kids went to daycare and preschool in Newton, and they now attend school in Newton. And because of their connection to NPS, Sarah and I have spent thousands of hours volunteering in Newton as coaches and organizers. We volunteer because we believe that all kids benefit from structured activities led by caring adults. We're committed to giving kids opportunities to learn and grow physically and emotionally, and we know that those opportunities don't just materialize out of thin air. We're proud to be part of the network of volunteers that keep organizations like Anger After School and Newton Girl Softball going. My deep connection to the Newton community has made me a better teacher. Watching my children go through elementary and middle school has given me much greater insight into the context in which my students at NNHS have grown up. I'm more familiar now with the curriculum experience by my incoming students, and I've learned skills as a coach that have benefited me in the classroom and vice versa. The deep connection I feel to Newton has only made this current round of contract negotiations more disheartening. From the beginning, the school committee's offers have seemed designed to make educators feel devalued and unwelcome in the community. The insistence that we work more days without additional pay, the proposals that would discourage families like mine from bringing our kids to the district and investing in the community, the effective pay cut implied by COLAs that lag inflation and peer districts, and most importantly to me, the modifications of the time and learning agreement that provide the framework under which the teachers can creatively meet the needs of their students. I implore you to stop treating Newton's teachers as legal foes who need to be defeated by novel tactics. Start treating us as the colleagues and community members we are. Start advocating for the funding needed to make sure Newton remains a community that creative educators both want and can afford to join. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Up next, we have Taban Molly. I suppose you couldn't hear that. Up next, we have Taban Molly.
Milihi. I think it's Milihi.
Already left?
I think so. She was one of our students.
Yeah, I remember. All right, moving on, we have Laura Carlin. Laura Carlin. No worries, no worries.
Hello, my name is Laura Carlin. I live in Watertown. I've taught eighth grade science at FA Day for over 16 years. I started out teaching in New York. When I worked there, I had colleagues who came to visit Newton South to see what it was like, and they said, yes, this is a model of what we want a high school to be. When I started moving back to Massachusetts and looking for jobs, I was deciding to interview and stay at Newton. All my friends everywhere said, Newton, yes, that's where you want to work. That's where you want to be teaching. As I met teachers when I moved into the school, I kept seeing my colleagues and my friends, and I looked at them and I said, these are my people. This is where I want to be challenged. This is absolutely yes where I want to be. When I went to conferences, when I applied for grants, when I presented nationally, people recognized Newton, and they say, yes, this is a school district we should be in. However, that's changing. Newton yes is now becoming Newton no. We don't want that. As I went through, I gained T-shirts that were yellow, red, now blue. I sit on hiring committees, we have applicants come in, and they say, no, our first choices are taking jobs other places. This has been ongoing. It's not improving. And contract negotiations like this year are not going to make it easier for us to hire science teachers. As I go through at summer workshops and I meet teachers and I say I'm from Newton, they say, nope, sorry, good luck with that. We're not saying yes to Newton. Last year, the science department applied for a grant. We were in a lucky place where we could. They wanted us. The program absolutely wanted to give us the money. They did not because they knew that our budget from the mayor and from the school committee would not support the funding for that grant for three years. As I go through nightlife now, it's becoming more of a Newton no than a Newton yes. I worry about how long my colleagues will stay with me. I worry about the quality of the new hires in the science department around me. I worry that as we move through and we watch Newton struggle to reach contracts year after year, that we will not be able to sustain the same kind of education we have in the past, especially in the sciences. There are teachers right now in schools like Marlboro who had to fire a teacher and lost a teacher. They cannot fill those positions. They are dividing the students among other classes, and they are having 30 more-plus students in a class because they can't fill the teacher positions. There have only been 25 teachers in the past five years graduating from certain programs in science masters to become certified teachers. That route is not, they're not producing the teachers we need. In order for Newton to stay competitive, we need to figure out how to work together, how to get a contract that is showing and demonstrating respect for educators, respect for instructional aids, and respect for the programs that we want. It all has to happen. It all needs to come together. I urge the school committee, the mayor, the city council, anyone who can take any action, to figure out a way to make Newton as good as it can be so we get the teachers and retain the teachers that we need. Thank you.
Up next, we have Ishan Tawari.
Good evening. My name is Ishan Tawari, and I live on 11 Rice Street. I'm a senior at Newton South High School and a friend to many teachers here. This is the second time giving public comment, and I would like to vehemently reiterate my support for the Newton Teachers Association. It's been about a month since I last spoke, and about 15 months since these meetings began, and it's so incredibly frustrating to see virtually no progress from the end of the school committee. As I expressed in my last speech, a student should not be up here lecturing you on the reprehensibility of your actions. Frankly, I don't have the time to be dealing with all of this. I have mounds of homework for multiple AP classes, and I'm drowning in college applications. I have family responsibilities and clubs to run. Obviously, it's not easy for me to be here, but it is easy for me to make the choice to be here. It is easy for me to put aside my work to defend my teachers, my friends. It is easy for me to drop everything when I see those I care for being mistreated by a government who seems to conveniently turn a blind eye on the issues that these teachers deal with on a daily basis. Put simply, it's easy for me to speak out against injustice. Now, I know your job is not easy. I understand that budgeting is a complicated issue, that there are nuances and complexities that I may never understand, but you were not elected to do an easy job. You were elected to deal with these complicated issues, to construct an equitable budget that addresses the needs of everyone. You were elected to be with us, not just when it was easy, but when it becomes hard too. You were entrusted to support all of us, the students, the teachers, and the faculty of Newton Public Schools, and you have betrayed our trust. Just as our teachers have demonstrated their commitment to excellence, it should be reasonable to expect the exact same from you. You were not elected to do an easy job, but you were elected to make easy choices, the choices that align with NPS values of excellence and equity. And if multiple students can be here today, students like myself and Boston and Taban, if we can make those easy choices, then you should be able to do the same as well. But frankly, you haven't been making those easy choices. Instead, you've chosen to withhold basic asks from the faculty, a living wage, adequately funded schools, and dignity. You've chosen to double down on your refusal to provide all these basic needs, and you've chosen to overlook all the issues that you, you, have created for the teachers. In a few short months, you've betrayed the trust of hundreds of teachers and faculty, of parents, and of students. So how do you win their trust back? The answer is easy. You make the easy choice. You choose to fight for teachers, to fight for fairness, excellence, and justice. The choice isn't hard. Please don't disappoint us again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ishan. Up next, we have Evan. I can't, I'm sorry. NG. Ning. Thank you so much, and apologies.
Good evening. My name is Evan Ng. I live on 27 Wade Street. I'm a senior at Newton South, and allow me to recall a moment from second grade. I'm sitting in bumper-to-bumper traffic, and this was the 40-minute commute that my mother took me to go from Quincy to Newton to get me to school every single morning. Now, if that doesn't tell you enough about the school system that draws so many from all around just to get into Newton, let me reiterate in a different scenario. My father entered the Boston school system at the age of 23, and he works there to this day. I remember sitting at the kitchen counter, pretending to work on my cardboard computer because I was so inspired by his hard work. I never questioned why my dad worked so hard, but I did question why he chose a profession that didn't pay as well. However, upon reflecting, I finally realized what it was: passion. My father told me a story once about when he rode the bus home with this little boy who was so scared because his mother forgot to pick him up from school. It was a 45-minute bus ride from Boston to Charlestown, not to mention the commute back. I realized that he was not paid to do this. None of these teachers are paid for bus duty. None of these teachers are paid to stay after school. None of these teachers are paid to go the extra mile. There is no overtime bonus, and no amount of money can buy this passion. Now, I'm not here to brag about my dad, but I am here to tell you that whenever I walk through those doors, whether it was at Countryside, where Mr. Beck spent his lunch helping me to master my multiplication table, or whether it was Ms. Tamaning, who worked so hard to create a tight-knit community in fourth grade. The community she was able to create was so unique that I struggle to this day to draw comparison to it. Passion continues to shine through the doors at Newton South in teachers like Ms. Leslie, who spent her lunch helping me to revise my college essay. Ms. Bailey, working tirelessly over the course of a month to help me replace a missing class, an effort that took a month too long simply because all the classes were beyond capacity. My math class had 33 people, and by June, we had to move rooms at certain times because people were overheating. So let me ask you a question. Do you see the passion that sits behind the smiling faces of these teachers? Do you see the hard work and unpaid time out of school that goes into being the educators that Newton has? Because it seems like you only see and criticize the faces marching down Walnut Street, holding signs, begging for a fair contract, a contract that is beyond deserved, a contract that has gone a year too long with no progress. It seems like you are blinded and solely focusing on topics like teachers not showing up to traditionally optional back-to-school convocation. Was investigating teachers not attending an optional meeting really more meaningful than reflecting on what prompted all these teachers to not attend? The time is now to give the teachers here in Newton the contract that they deserve and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan, and apologies once again for mispronouncing. Boston Bolis.
There's one thing that remains present at these negotiation meetings: the word "truth." Let's begin with some basic truths. I go to Newton South, I have a dog, and my favorite color is green. I'm on a time crunch here, so let's get down to the more relevant ones. For example, many of my teachers at Newton South work second jobs, a product of abysmal wages, even though Newton has consistently been ranked within the top one hundred wealthiest cities in America. So why can't the city adequately provide for a basic necessity? Joe Biden can help us out, as he explains the difference between talk and action. Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value. Despite the claim that you prioritize students and educators, teachers have been leaving at unprecedented rates. So let's stop believing your words and look to your actions. You falsify the numbers in your citywide emails, hoping that we can't see through them. So surely, we must believe that you value teachers and students now. Allow me to summarize another truth that many here relate to. When a teacher's stories and experiences in NPS air on upsetting the public is when you know you have stopped valuing the teachers. Let's look at the student perspective. We live within your schools for thirteen long years. For most, NPS is all we've ever known, and we're told from day one that this nationally-ranked school system can take us far. People often ask me, Boston, do you ever think about college? My truth is, like the many four thousand students across Newton North and South, I do. And I hope I speak for each and every one of them when I tell you that we think about our futures enough. It is unpleasant, uncomfortable, and overwhelming experience to sit back and watch your future fall into the hands of a government who is actively harming its educators. It is devastating to talk about the negative effects in other states with what we consider a broken school system. But it is even more disappointing to be a part of one that mindlessly falls into the same trap, as if the trail we are currently continuing on isn't leading us into a death spiral. I can only hope that you realize that beyond that line of teachers is a line of students who worry about their futures just by seeing a declining number, a number that this school committee is solely responsible for. Make no mistake, this is not the road not taken or the truth not explored. We know what happens to underfunded schools, and now is the time to set the standard like Newton always has: to pay living wages to a historically underpaid profession. My English teacher taught me an absolute truth, or an objective truth. Your systematic control of the numbers, both in the media and on paper, affect our lives down to a T. Your industrial tech boxes of which electives to cut threatens our quality of education, and your continued unwillingness to negotiate in good faith hurts Newton's public image. My truth, my future, and my education all rest in your hands, so choose what you value very carefully.
Thank you, Boston. Our last public speaker tonight will be Cory Pop. I think Taban is here now, too. Taban is off. Yes, no, no. Cory, Cory, please. Cory? Taban, I will recognize you in a moment. Cory, please do take the mic.
Thank you, everyone. Hi, my name is Cory Pop. I live in Waltham, but I've been a Newton educator, English teacher here for over twenty-five years. I'm also a former Newton resident and a Newton mom, but I'm actually reading for one of my colleagues and friends tonight who isn't able to be here. So she will email you her full remarks. I'm just going to read a short excerpt for tonight for her. So this is written by Gigi Luckett, and she has a call for pause and reflection for our elected officials. As I sit on my living room sofa to share my thoughts, I think of all the insightful ideas that have run through my head as a result of the stalled negotiations between the NTA and the city of Newton. One skill I strengthened when training to become a teacher was self-reflection. Last weekend, I practiced that same skill once again after watching the movie Simone. For those of you who don't know about this film, the basic plot deals with a Venezuelan freedom fighter whose trauma and guilt make it difficult for him to choose between returning to his country to keep fighting against a tyrannical regime or stay in exile in his new home, Miami. Peel a layer or two, however, and what you see is a country where the morals have gone rogue, and corruption is the name of the game, along with extortion, blackmail, and death threats, among other atrocities, hence the largest exodus of the Western Hemisphere, with over seven million people in the span of a decade. My country of origin keeps crumbling, but the deterioration process did not occur overnight. A solid and corrupt democracy of forty or so years gave way to the rise of a demagogue and populist individual who started by eroding the political institutions, starving people to death, dismantling and expropriating the financial and private sectors, sowing hatred among the population, and other dictatorial-like moves under cheap populist slogans and cliched "empty promises." The film reminded me that after having witnessed the weakening of the middle class in my country of origin, I do so again in the US. Sadly, this metric is being eroded daily: minimum wage stagnation, meager protections in the workplace, union busting, and high cost of living, to name a few. In my experience, the strength of the middle class is one of the most reliable measures of the stability and power of a community or a nation. Once this slice of society is attacked and destroyed by its leaders, the fate of the nation is at great risk. Thus, I ask our elected officials to pause and reflect. The tug of war that has been happening between the city of Newton and the teaching profession is unnecessary, one-hundred percent avoidable, and sadly to me, mimics the circus in Washington, DC, reminding me of the putrefaction that my country of origin has undergone. I truly believe that each of the nine members of the school committee know.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, and have known all along what the right thing to do to solve the problem is. I clearly remember when one of you running for school committee, and my neighbor hosted a meet-and-greet event. We all gathered in his backyard, and the member shared with the audience the platform that they were running on, and we were hopeful about what they had to offer. Fast forward four years, and regretfully, opinions have changed. I ask myself, what is it about being in positions of power and forgetting what someone was elected to do in the first place? Is this phenomenon commonplace for people of power? Are egos so big?
Stop. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. And now, our last speaker for the evening, Taban Malley.
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 Thank you.
My parents moved to this town to live in Twoham and Pond Parkway, apartment 201, for the school system's exceptional teachers and administrators. If there's one thing I've learned from the past twelve years of being an NPS student, it's that teachers make sure children grow up into people, whole, well-rounded people with life skills and critical thinking and the tools they need to succeed. The academic success I strived for in high school has been, of course, enabled by the support of my family and loved ones, but without my teachers, I would never, never have been able to make the most of my education. My dedication would have meant nothing if not for the tireless empathy and beyond-the-job-description efforts of each and every one of my teachers from my freshman year during COVID-19 through my current senior year. Furthermore, every student struggles at some point or other in their educational experience. My own experience with mental health struggles presented a threat to my education and well-being, and only thanks to the unwavering efforts and kindness of administrators, guidance counselors, and, yes, teachers, going above and beyond to be there for their students and their community, I received the essential support I needed. To see these same dear people be deprived of the basic pay and rights of any worker, let alone people with such integral roles in this community, is beyond saddening. It's insulting to the experiences of every student that has ever relied on these people, and the experiences of every faculty member that works their tails off to do more than their job for less-than-livable pay. Like my friends have already expressed, I am a full-time student with plenty of work I could be attending to right now. In fact, I have three APs to self-study because budget cuts meant I couldn't take all the classes I wanted to. They were already full to bursting. But I'm not handling those. I'm here to stand in support of my teachers, my counselors, my administrators, because this is important to me. If you take nothing else away from this speech, let this be your takeaway: there is no academic excellence without fair treatment of our faculty. I urge the school committee to do what is well within their power and make sure our teachers, my teachers, the ones who have guided me to where I am today, get the full contract that is well within their rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our public comment period is now closed. We thank all who spoke. We very much appreciate hearing your perspective, and we will move on in a moment to our consent agenda. I'll give a moment for the folks who want to leave to file out. Appreciate it. Thank you. So moving on to our consent agenda, we have a vote to approve the draft minutes from the November sixth meeting, a vote to approve the NAACP tuition change as detailed in the memo from Kathleen Browning, Director of NAACP, and Liam Hurley, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer, a vote to approve additional staffing, as discussed during our last meeting, and detailed in the memo from Casey No. Miller, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and Liam Hurley, and finally, a vote to approve grants as detailed in the memo from Amy Mistro, Director of Business Operations. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing no requests, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Go ahead, Rajiv.
I motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Rajiv. Is there a second?
A second reduced motion.
Thank you, Kathy. We have a motion and a second. We'll now do a roll call vote. Ward one.
Yes.
Ward two.
Yep.
Ward three.
Yes.
Ward four is a yes. Ward five.
Yes.
Ward six.
Yes.
Ward seven.
Yes.
Ward eight.
Yes.
And Mayor Fuller.
Yes.
Thank you. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. Up next, we have an update from Superintendent Anna Nolan. Superintendent?
So I think it's just the entry plan that we start with.
Oh, that's right.
Steve's going to give me the button to drive here. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. So thank you, everyone, and welcome to everyone who's listening at home. So as you may recall, last March, I was hired to become the new superintendent of the Newton Public Schools. As part of the interview process, I was asked to actually lay out an entry planning process, and that process, and the audition, if you will, was in these blue slides here. And so I am going to skip all those blue slides, because you've already heard that from me, and you liked what you heard, I think, because here I sit. So the expectations of why we entry plan and what those goals are are what we're going to hear about tonight. So you gather information about the district, establish some relationships along the way, assess strengths, and create a community of contacts and networks. I just want to say to everyone, though, that the entry planning process does not end simply because I give a report tonight. There's still a lot to learn about the Newton Public Schools. Certainly, we have a lot of weighty and difficult, intense moments before us that may have made it impossible for me to understand fully parts of the Newton schools and the issues and the strengths before it. So this is part one of ongoing information, and I'm just going to report on what I know for the first ninety days of working within the system. So I'm going to skip all these things that we talked about back in March, which talked about my core values and Newton's core values, and how we would entry plan and what the phases are. So you're hearing about phase one and two here, so the outcome of listening, learning, and building some relationships, and analyzing that information and collaborating with staff. So after this meeting, I'll be doing phases three and four, which will be circling back to check findings with various groups. So small group presentations with different departments, with different groups within the community, to say, did I get this just right? Does this resonate with you? Are there other perspectives that I have not heard or that need to be amplified? And doing that is a listening and trust-building process, we hope. So this was the timeline that I set forward, so we had hoped to complete all the expectations and the investigations through October and report to you now in November. These were the questions asked, and you have a detailed one-hundred-and-fifty-page report on the data analysis, the document review, the different interviews that I conducted, every barbecue I attended. You can read all about that in the documents. My job tonight here, though, is to give you some high points and some findings that I think are critical as we head into the budget planning process. You just heard very wisely from Boston, I believe, budgets are moral documents. What you put in your budget is what you value as a system, and I am the person who has to bring forward all of the items I think you need to take the school system from where it is now, which is an excellent and very strong sought-after system, to the next level of greatness that we want to take the system and our children to. This is the parts of all the entry planning documents that are before you tonight, so a document and data review, the one-on-one meetings, the meet-and-greets, a staff thought exchange, and a community thought exchange. And just to review for the community again, a thought exchange is a crowdsourcing platform that is different from a survey that has some AI technology involved in it, so that patterns that emerge within the responses are themed by the artificial intelligence and brought to us to review. And I'll show you the places where we've used that and where we've used just good old-fashioned superintendent intelligence, where I read things and made some assumptions and put them together, because, A, that's my job, and B, there were some really strong findings that were both in the thought exchanges, in the interviews, in the data reviews, and in the one-on-one meetings, classroom visits, all of those things. I also met with a lot of local businesses and local community organizations, so you're hearing the summary of all of that business together. So I did just want to say first, before I dive in, I've been working with Thought Exchange since the company started in 2014, and they are a Canadian company, and they do thought exchanges all across North America. So hundreds and hundreds of towns, thousands of data points. And I just wanted you to hear a little bit about their assessment of Newton's use of the tool. So we had thousands of responses, which is not atypical, especially for a city of our size, but here was what was atypical about the interactions. So typically, people hang in to share their own idea. How it works is, I ask the question, what should we keep, change, or revise about the Newton Public Schools? So everyone got that same, the Newton Public Schools. What should we do? And so people would type their own answer, and then maybe one or two more. That's usually what people do. They put their best idea out there, and then they read a couple of everyone else's ideas. And the idea is you're supposed to read other people's ideas and star the ones you agree with. And in doing so, the stars, the starred items, go up in the ranks. The AI technology, however, sorts out, repeats from the same computer, so if you log on and you try to game the system and like bullet the things that you care about more than anyone else, and it may be shocking to you, maybe not, that Newton tried, a lot of folks tried to do that, and so they were sort of, those responses were kicked out. If an identical response was put in over and over and over to sort of bullet the system, that was removed. It can detect those types of scenarios. The idea is to give a true account, not just hearing the loudest voices or the most votes, if you will. And then the AI technology reads the data and gives many graphic representations, which, at smaller group activities and sharing of the entry plan, I'm happy to show people some of those visualizations. So I just wanted you to know how that worked. The second thing they told us about Newton was that not only did we not be true to type on just sharing one idea and bulging others, the average person actually went and read well over fifty-five other people's things and starred them. So there was a real desire to know what other people were saying. And the third amazing thing about this was that the dataset from North America is large enough across school systems that the Thought Exchange folks can give a sentiment score and a type of mood to the responses of neutral, passive, or positive. Neutral, passive, positive, or negative. And they said that in the Common Ideas and Differences Report, which is one of the last reports in my entry plan, that they'd never seen such huge difference of alignment in terms of ideas. So we have a lot on the really positive, and we have really negative, and then there's a great and then there's a great neutral middle, but the alignment of the positive and negative is quite different. There's not a lot of overlap in the common ground, which I think resonates for people. I see people nodding and nodding. So, just an interesting piece of information. So, I see that as a challenge that I look to work on. So, just to give a frame on entry planning, so when you're a new superintendent, a new leader hired to come in, you have to do two things, and that is to celebrate the strengths of what exists within the current organization, and find challenges to set the tone for what is next for the district. So, by default, people can be worried about entry planning processes, right? Because they like a new perspective or a fresh take on practices and procedures, but everyone's always a little worried about, well, what's gonna change and what's different? So I just want to acknowledge that. This process has been a little bit hindered in terms of our current contract negotiations, as I didn't want to put staff in any tough positions in terms of responding or sharing. However, I do expect that the findings will be something that we can work on together, that improve the quality of lives of students and staff, because that is very important to me and both the school committee, is improving the working conditions for teachers. And it has been a slow process in figuring out what that is, but there is an expectation upon my joining the staff here, that we would be working to improve the system for teachers and for students. And so certainly, new leadership, there's a new style, maybe new language, maybe new perspectives, but what I have learned is that my strategies and perspectives are quite different than what has been happening before in terms of superintendent leadership. So my being here is very different, and I have a huge swath of patience around that. Not in a rush, I intend to work hard and long here. I want to be that person who sits at public speak and says they've been here for 24 years and they can't imagine going anywhere else. So, the focus will just be different as we co-broker the next phase of Newton together, as families, as students, as leaders, and as staff. Teaching and learning is our core mission, and Newton Public Schools has very strong leaders and staff. And so I challenged myself with this slide to sort of distill, what is it that you heard that could really be taken away as the major point from staff and their life mission as educators with our kids? And it couldn't have been a better night in that three students gave passionate discussions of that very commitment that teachers have made to them. And what I heard was this phrase over and over, that our staff grow minds, hearts, and bonds for a better future, led by students who can independently and safely navigate the world, and in doing so, change it for the better. And I just felt I heard that in every corner of this city, and that people prioritized care for the school, and respect for its educators, and deep investment in its children. And that is a wonderful place for a community to be. The staff are passionate, they're prepared, credentialed, most are experienced, and we are so fortunate in Newton Schools to have that strong foundation. My job, of course, is to take us forward into a new phase of Newton, in a way that honors this outstanding foundation and the work already happening, but enhances and extends the work moving ahead. And we'll do that by building relationships and having participation from all levels, from students to staff and leaders, within the next phase of growth and success. So I shared a little bit about superintendent versus artificial intelligence analysis. Both of those things are in my entry report, and they are delineated as such, so which are the sources that I used AI to look at, and which are my own. The use of AI theming, I just want to share with you, is done because there's a worry about bias anytime that you are putting together some sort of themed report. And I had to make sure that I was checking myself as I was doing interpretive work for the district. So this is one way that I could do that. I also checked my findings with different parties, different readers, and asked for feedback on whether I was getting things right. So, I then take those themes and I wrote about them in coordination with analysis of materials across the system. So, the pages of, if you have only a few pages to read of all of my dissertation here, pages 49 to 83 are key analysis. They're not AI, but superintendent analysis. So, there's the cheat sheet version for you. So I just want to dive into a few key findings that I know the community will want to know, and I need the school committee to know, as we start our budget season and we have difficult conversations about funding and priorities. First, just want to say in the upper-left corner here, the elementary staff and schedule, especially around what's called MTSS, so that's the Mass Tiered System of Support. And tonight, you're actually gonna hear some information from some of our staff about updates in this work led by MTSS teammates, and those folks who make that work happen. MTSS, just in shorthand for folks at home, is how we do student support and enrichment within the school day. So what happens in a regular classroom each day, that's one level of instruction and intervention, and then we hope that we provide deeper and deeper levels in small groups, sometimes in additional classes within a day. You've heard of things like win blocks or intervention blocks in districts. Those are the times in the day when students can get what they need, and teachers across the system can collaborate to address their needs. That schedule and process at the elementary school here in Newton is not reliable at all schools, and cannot be counted on by elementary teachers. They have insufficient planning time, they do not have coordinated intervention blocks, and the time and learning schedule as it is currently constructed in the union guidance makes it almost impossible for principals to schedule what is needed so students get real-time access to supports. That issue creates other issues within the system. The major issue that it creates is, it puts undue pressure on the average elementary teacher. There is no team time for them to say, if Anping and Rajiv and Chris and I were all fourth grade teachers, we had coordinated planning time, we could divide the work among us, and we could reduce the teacher isolation, and therein create coordination and alignment across our grade level. That does not reliably exist in every group and every building, and that makes it very difficult and isolating for teachers. So, the pressure on the teacher then is, individual teachers become the thing to have, instead of the system supporting the teachers and the student. So the good news is, we know how to do that, and we know what to do. It will require an investment of resources in order to make that happen, and to create reliable intervention and enrichment time. This will maximize the time of special educators, social workers, school psychologists, guidance counselors, English Language Learner staff, behavioral techs, BCBA's, speech and language, and OT and PT staff. Currently, without a reliable schedule that is staffed appropriately, they run around trying to find the 20 minutes that they need to execute their child's IEP needs or a plan. And while that happens here because of the elbow grease of the staff, that is not a reliable and systematic system that allows us to combat teacher isolation, exhaustion, and burnout. That's a lot. It works hand in glove with something over here on the right, which is budgeting for teaching and learning. Teaching and learning should be central to our school district, it's our core mission. And the budgeting and training, the budgeting for training, curriculum, and professional development, assessment design, is not adequate to meet the demands of the system. So a lot of times, teachers are required in that time, they do have to prep, to create curriculum materials from scratch, to research the methodologies and try to seek them out on their own. I met with a teacher today, who told me that last year she spent $1,600 of her own money to learn a particular type of professional development. We need to be prioritizing certain types of professional development. We can't do everything. We live within a budgetary ecosystem, but you asked me to give you the feedback, so here's what I'm doing. And I just want to make a statement about sort of finances later. But these two things work hand in glove, when we have rich curriculum resources and training and professional development for our staff, along with this aligned schedule, we have something really important and reliable for every single class, for every single grade. And that comes then with common assessments and curriculum, and a scope and sequence that can be depended on by both the staff, consulting practitioners, and by families. So it takes away, something that was another finding, was this idea that sometimes it's unclear to families how we're actually operating, and what services are available and not available. There's great worry within the community about knowing what's actually happening to their young people in terms of support. And then finally, a major recommendation is around high school class sizes. You heard all three of our high school folks indicate today the size of their class sizes. I brought to this committee two weeks ago, our class size report. Math and science classes are 27 to 30 kids on average in the school system. And there's a lot of conversation in the community about why are our math and science scores where they are? I don't think it's a secret. When you have 32 kids in a math class, there's not a lot of personal time for support and intervention during that type of a class. I also, just pointing out what other school systems have in play at the high school level, the students talked about it as cut electives, but there are other opportunities that most of the surrounding towns offer that I want for Newton. Dual enrollment classes, early college, certification pathways, partnerships for CTE that allow students to move in and out of CTE and certification programs. Some of these are simply alignment matters, some are funding matters, some are opening ourselves up to the collaboratives that exist within Metro West to provide certain services. This would allow us to offer more electives and offerings to students without having to add staff. And we have the technology right around us to do that. So there's a lot of options that could be exercised to address some of these concerns that every student leadership group brought me. We do have issues with staff and student absenteeism. Classes are often canceled at the high school level, and then other staff have to cover at the elementary school and the middle school. This too contributes to a lack of planning time and burnout of teachers. If they are pulled from their own planning time to cover for someone else, that means they have to push that work to the evening. And that's not a sustainable piece for teachers to be running all of their business outside of school hours. In addition, expanding arts opportunities and conservatory and performing arts pathways. There's some really dynamic teachers here. There's just not enough, early enough, in order for students to really make that commitment to be able to get into the kinds of conservatory programs that they would like to get into. So this is feedback from families and kids struggling to access that part of their dream. I would say those are my three biggest concerns coming out of the first 90 days within the school system. The second slide here about key findings, this first one is about human resources, and you are gonna have an in-depth entry plan from Dr. Santa shortly, so I'm not gonna go in-depth on that. I think it's December 4th is the meeting where she's coming to share that. But suffice it to say, a strategy around human resource systems, retaining our staff, attracting more diverse candidates to Newton, these are all pieces that you will hear from Dr. Santa shortly. Two other areas for attention are in the business office in terms of upgrades and the method of budgeting. So we want to develop budgets that build the future of an even stronger Newton Public Schools, and develop community partnerships that would allow us to add to our existing budgets, whether that's through alumni and development groups, whether that's through additional grant writing, and an expansion of the grants office. These are things we look forward to, in expanding our reach in terms of managing our own finances and bringing more revenue into the district. The business office also oversees things like school meals and busing, and let me tell you, school meals came up at every single parent meeting. It was like one of the big findings about like improving the food service. And I just want to give a shout-out to Amy Mistro, who oversees this in our business office. She's really been moving the current food vendor to come in line with what's happening and we're seeing, with what's been shared, and we're seeing some good changes. So I appreciate that. It's been a lot of hope for the digitizing of bus routes, for bus-riding apps, those types of innovations that we just haven't put into place here yet in Newton. That's not to say that Regina Moody is probably like artificial intelligence herself as our bus coordinator. She knows every single street and like can visualize every route in her head, and it's very impressive. But that too is not sustainable. If Regina goes, what happens, right? So we need to build those types of systems. And I would say, a major concern that is an umbrella over all of the ideas that have come forth through my entry planning is around communication and transparency improvements. So, asking us to cut down on the number of communications, both internally and externally, that we have and align them to address the needs of English Language Learner families, which are rising to over 1,000 people in the district now, and we have many, many languages and multilingual families, and we can do better in terms of how we reach those individuals. Parents had a strong desire for parent portals, for reading about the curriculum, gaining training on their own, so a parent area where they could educate themselves about the school system. What is the school council? How do I get help for my child in middle school? Those types of things that we present on all the time, but we don't have like a memorialized place for it. The number one request here, of course, was about where can I find what's actually being taught at each level? So on this next slide, I have a whole section of that. So, here, under the creation of data dashboards and a curriculum transparency site, these two areas came up over and over again across the school system in terms of parents really wanting to know, you know, if I have a concern about what's being taught in math, or when it's being taught, where do I find out? When are fractions being taught, right? So that kind of thing. And honestly, we have about 10 people calling the superintendent's office every day, asking those types of questions, which is really interesting. So, we already have the teaching and learning office working on that, so I'm really grateful for that. Just helping parents self-serve what kinds of experiences their kids are having in a given day. There's been a lot of discussion, certainly at this committee level, but also within the staff, and you'll read within my entry plan, that for several years, the staff leadership have tried to put forward a data dashboard to track student progress, and to see, how are we doing in certain areas? We're moving ahead with a design of a dashboard that will be internal to start, but the idea is down the line, that families would have real-time access to their information. They have it in Aspen right now, but it's not, Aspen's our student database, but it's not easy to digest. And having, you know, built a few of these data dashboards, we're still at that place where opening that to parents is a massive confusion, because the tests are complicated, we haven't distilled exactly what visuals every parent should see. But what we want to start first with is that every teacher should be able to see a profile of her students in her classroom, so that she has an easy time. She has to run around and find all the data sets, and then try to analyze it, but she has real-time information around which to plan more personalized learning activities within the classroom. So again, hopefully improving the lives of teachers and their effectiveness in meeting student needs. The discussion about curriculum assessment and alignment, this is just a detail here of the types of training that curriculum leaders have indicated that they would like to have. There's been a lot of homegrown curriculum within the Newton Schools, which is a point of pride, but it's also a point of exhaustion for our staff, because they are having to be like curriculum creators and textbook designers over here, and also looking for leveled resources while they're trying to teach differentiated instruction and leveled classes. It's a tall order to do all of those things. There is no one curriculum that is a unicorn that you can just take out of the box and it does all the things. But we would love to give our staff more resources so that they could start with some pieces and adapt them to be what Newton needs them to be, and also adapt them to the young people sitting in front of the teacher in the class. And there is not a lot of curriculum that is purchased to augment what teachers are doing. There's a lot of homegrown curriculum, and it's very strong, but as we articulate to new standards and pieces, there's lots of good curriculum out there that could reduce the burden on teachers, and also help us with the alignment and unity across schools. When you have 22 schools, you know, let's say 15 elementary schools, if everyone is homegrowing their own response to the third grade curriculum, that's a lot of variance, and it will impact how we measure student progress over time. And so if we say we care about those things, we have to standardize some things, but I want to make sure that every teacher's listening to me now. That does not mean we're all gonna be on That does not mean we're all going to be on page ninety-nine at the same time in a standardized way. It means that we will decide what we're loose on and what we're tight on, where teachers have creative latitude and when we're all going to hold hands and say we're going to take a snapshot at this time. That is a teacher-led process served by administrators like myself so that we can find that curriculum that makes the most sense with the right materials to back our teachers. And then finally, on this slide, there was a lot of discussion as if you've read the Common Grounds and Differences report. And the very first thing I learned when I came into Newton is that there was this huge debate about equity versus excellence. And I want to tell you that that is a false dichotomy, that the two things work in tandem. But there is a lot of feeling about whose DEI is the DEI, who's included in the DEI. There was a lot of discussion of what that means in terms of, you know, are we only focusing on racial diversity? And the answer to that is, no, we aren't. We're focusing on supporting our LGBTQ plus students, combating antisemitism, incorporating anti-abelist work within the Office of DEI, thinking about cultural diversity and linguistic diversity. We have a lot of work to do to make sure that our very diverse student body feels welcomed and included to participate fully in school, which is the foundation for excellence in terms of their academic and social emotional progress. So the good news is, the umbrella can get bigger, right? That the needs of the DEI office will grow and there's only two people working there now. We may move in the direction of creating family engagement centers and development offices to try to expand the reach of this particular area in our strategic work. And lastly, I just, we've spoken a little bit about this, that Boston College is coming in to map our technology use within the district. I mention it here because it's come up a lot, again, in very polarized ways. People either love it, love it, love it, or they don't want it at all. And that's sort of how people feel about the technology. I'm in learning mode, like how do we actually use it at every single level, right? So I've been in a lot of classrooms, there's huge variance in how it's used. This survey that we're doing with Boston College will allow us to understand what technology pedagogy is actually happening in the district, not just the presence of the device. That only tells you a little bit about what's going on. All of this entry planning is to say that in coordination with the school committee, this report, our long-range plans for facilities, for sustainability. So for example, I've asked Steve Rattendy, our Director of Technology, to put together a sustainability plan for the technology that we do have, for any technology that supports students with special needs. Those plans don't exist right now, so what happens is we replace things when they break instead of having a regular replacement cycle to plan for. And so the long-range planning piece is something that, you know, the school committee is working really hard to get a lot of strategic analyses done this year. So whether it's facilities, whether it's enrollment, so that we can sit down and say, this is what the next five years is going to look like and what we think it might cost. So we can put strategic priorities out and get feedback from the community. So the committee has really set us up beautifully for that. And so what's next? So I will be having a little roadshow, sharing all of the things that are happening in terms of the entry plan, but we will need to settle our contract negotiations. And I share all this entry plan information so that you have the full spectrum of things that have to occur within the school system. And they're all interrelated and connected, how we pay our teachers, how we support them, how we give them resources. It's all connected and it's important to us. We had put out to develop the profile of a Newton graduate so that we would have sort of a North Star, if you will, for how we will point those resources and how we will make decisions about what gets funded and what doesn't, what programs go forward and what do not. So we need to go through that process with our community to hear from them directly, which will then lead into a strategic plan development process. I envision that happening this spring. That may or may not be the case depending on the timing. But what I do know is that all of the reports from McKibben and our facilities management and our sustainability plans will all come together in the spring and we'll have a lot of good information with which to make that strategic plan. And I look forward in this budget season to doing budget education and transparency workshops. I do want you to know as part of our communication strategy that our communications office with our new internship program, we have seventeen interns who are high schoolers, who are working in the superintendent's office and the Office of Communications. I just have to get my hands on some kids sometimes and they're so amazing and they are helping us to get ready for the budget season in terms of, our communications director is doing these features on Wednesdays, like Wouldn't You Like to Know Wednesdays, where we'll be featuring different parts of the Newton Public Schools, including positions that people may not know about. So for example, as I've been meeting with a couple city councilors and they're talking about, well, what's in that budget, that school budget anyway? And I start talking about BCBAs and behavior therapists. These were things that were not in school budgets just a mere decade ago. So what is that? What do those people do in our district? And so we're featuring things like that so that every single staff person's role is known to the community and their value is known. We're also doing some staff features on Fridays. I have a podcast that features students and kids and their excellence within the system. And we're just getting started, but we're trying to convey all the learning from the entry planning process through multiple modes and our students are an incredible asset to us as we do that. So that concludes my formal presentation for the entry plan. If anybody would like to read it, it's online and I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone. Bless you.
Thank you, Anna. Just getting started and I think we are dreaming big right along with you. The Newton community is going to be excited to dream with you and envision where our district will go under your construction. That's very wonderful. Questions from the members? Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Tamika. And thank you, Anna, for that presentation, putting this document together. I mean, I truly encourage, you know, our families, our staff to take a look through this. It's a lot, but it is, you know, perhaps the most informative thing that's been put in front of us, certainly in my time here and as long as I've been a parent in MPS. And, you know, it's the thing that I've been looking for, this very honest assessment of what the needs of this district are and how it can move forward. You know, there's no BS, there's no political spin. This is just straight up, what do we need and how do we improve this system? And, you know, I think it's really perhaps the most concrete, you know, evidence yet that Dr. Nolan is the person to lead this district forward. And I know that probably seems like it doesn't need to be said, but unfortunately, I do think it needs to be said in light of some very public comments and what I would argue inappropriate comments from NTA leadership speculating about Dr. Nolan's future with MPS and her relationship with this committee. Commentary that really seemed to try to create a perception of instability where I don't believe any instability actually exists. So given that, I just want to say I have full confidence in your ability to address the needs of this institution. I have full confidence in your ability to balance the needs of this institution and to address them, the needs of our students, the needs of our educators and staff, and the desires of the NTA and MTA leadership. I truly believe you're up to that task and I just want to say I look forward, working with you, to move this plan forward. Thank you, Tamika.
Well said. Thank you, Chris. Others? Student members as well? Go ahead, Helen.
Just really fast.
Pull your mic a little closer.
Really fast. I want to say a couple points you highlighted about like addressing high school class sizes and elective and other study pathways. I think I'm really excited. I'm sure a lot of students at South and North would also benefit. And something I haven't heard of yet, but I do know that is very important, the parent portals, because I understand that my parents and the parents of students in the district really would love to be involved more with their students' education and they would love to know more. So I think that would be a really, really great point and a thing to have for Newton Public Schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen. Any other comments or questions? Oh, I see you, Paul. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tamika. As Anna mentioned, she promised us an entry plan during her interviews and we endorsed that approach and now we have it in hand. I just have to say, I think it's a tour de force. It's an impressive document and a great summary. I also want to pitch in on Chris's point about our confidence in our superintendent. She deserves that confidence. She's demonstrated deep experience and wisdom in putting this plan together and I really look forward to its implementation. To me, it confirms what many parents have said about our schools, that our aims are noble, but we do not yet have the accountability in place to demonstrate how and where we are succeeding and where improvement is needed. And Anna set forth challenges for all of us in this plan, certainly for her as a superintendent, but also for her senior leadership team here at the Ed Center and the principals throughout the district and of course for the professional staff across the schools. The work she's laid out is necessary and will help the district achieve its motto. Our job, I believe, is to provide a clear sense of support for her plan through our policy votes and our budgetary actions, but also moral support. She needs to know that we have her back when she makes hard decisions about curriculum, about auditing of results and about personnel. And Mayor Fuller, as you know, has a dual role here, both as a member of the school committee and as chief executive of the more expansive city government. I'm very confident based on years of working together with her that she and we can be aligned as we move forward to carry out this rigorous and very necessary agenda. Thank you, Tamika.
Thank you, Paul. Go ahead, Mayor Fuller.
Leaders matter. We're really grateful to have this superintendent, Dr. Nolan. It's been clear as since before July first, you dove right in. The experience that you've brought from your previous years means that you could listen actively and think deeply and bring forward ideas that are going to help our teachers, our students, our parents, our community. I'm grateful for the deep thought and the clear vision.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. Go ahead, Anping.
Thanks, Tamika. When I, this weekend, I did spend some time read the whole document. That was really overwhelming and impressive and we can't use other words, in over a hundred pages. I was really, blew my mind away that Anna could, you know, use her time while just getting aboard with Newton and to do such a deep, deep, comprehensive committee, you know, information seeking and analyzing the information and answer a lot of questions or try to answer a lot of questions, which I had been thinking and struggling a little bit during the past few years. And I'm so happy to hear that. Just give some few examples, a few things really impressed me. And the first one is the focus on academics. And yes, clearing up misunderstanding, which is not easy, but it's time. And more emphasis on data collection system, which I've been advocating for many years and it's not easy, it takes time, resources. But that's something we have to do if we're serious about educational academic excellence. And more partnership and communication with parents and city stakeholders, that's also important. And I'm so happy to hear that we need to better job to communicate with the parents and let them understand what's going on and what their kids are learning. And this, again, it's very difficult. It's very rigorous system and, you know, dashboard to share that information takes time, but it's good to start now. And more efforts and work on the school budget process. I think, you know, we are willing to support and work together. And this is a process, I think I learned a lot of things first time after being here six years on school committee. But this is difficult, let's be honest, difficult and challenging and emotional. But we have to be more involved and I totally agree. And I'm happy that Anna takes an active role in this process. And I share with my colleagues a comment that we're willing to give all the support. We have her back. And more attention to the HR hiring and onboarding, that's also important. And I'd like to see more, hiring more diverse staff. And that's challenging part, but we need to make more efforts. And then more focus on the long-term strategic planning. And I remember I was on the strategic planning when Jeff Young was here. That's more than, I don't know, fifteen years probably, you know. David was here, what, ten years? So that before David. And I'm still having a good memory when, when Cloud, I'm sorry, what's the school chair? The name was on my mind, but she was very a good listener.
It was Claire, Claire Sokoloff.
Yes, thank you. Claire Sokoloff. And so it's time. But I also understand it's very ambitious and with our current challenges, probably would not move ahead as smoothly as we would like to see. And but still, someone has to push and we have to work together. And so I'm very excited, you know, we are ready to roll our sleeve and do something. And as many parents reminded us when they sent the letter, we moved to Newton because wonderful school system. And now they're concerned, you know, from various reasons, they're concerned our Newton school system is sliding and we don't have full data yet. But probably I'd like to see more data to see if that's the case. But that perception is already there, probably will hurt us. So again, I'm very excited. It's a huge plan and just listen to you. It's a little bit overwhelming. Just listen to you, what you laid us, you know, laid out all these things. But it's time. Hopefully we can move ahead, you know, after we, you know, successfully finish our negotiation, which is not easy, but we have to move ahead. So I'm still hopeful. Thank you.
Thanks, Anping. Go ahead, Anna.
I just want to respond to one thing, Anping, just because I don't want to put forward a thought that isn't aligned within the report. And here's what it is. So there is not agreement that the Newton Public Schools has declined in some way. That was one of those pieces that had buckets on both sides and a great middle. And the middle basically boiled down to, I put in the report, the concept of harith, which is a Welsh word, nostalgia, pain, longing. A lot of people talked about the fact that the school system, the Newton I knew, does not feel like the Newton that is now. And there are different children, there's a different diversity, there's different And there are different children. There's a different diversity. There's different programs. There's different innovations. The moment when a parent's expectation does not match up with what's happening on the ground, that's the moment where someone says, it doesn't feel like what happened to me. Is it good or bad? And then they go and they search and they look for information to confirm, is it good or it bad? And whatever they find says that it's good or it's bad. And sometimes that's accurate information and sometimes it's not. And so one of the thirsts that I have for getting information out there is because I think people would be heartened to have the actual information so they could be reassured that something isn't less excellent, it's just different. And there's a lot of, a lot of that. And that's pretty common in other school systems too. That's not just a Newton thing. That's that's a everywhere thing, but it's on steroids here a little bit. So that was one of the the differences report. So I just like close to what you said, but I don't want to say like everyone thinks things are going downhill because that is not, that is not the case.
There was a perception, quickly Tamika. So this portrait of graduate will be wonderful opportunity for community to get together, hopefully keep away those, some kind of ideologies, but let's look at the facts and all those evidence to see what kind of graduate we are looking for. And that will help us to move ahead and get a better understanding or consensus if we can and what kind of graduates we'd like to have. So I I'm very happy about that project. Thanks.
Thank you Anping. Anna, I'm so grateful to you for making that very clear clarification on that point. I appreciate it. Go ahead Rajiv.
Thank you. I'll I'll be brief. Thank you for the document. It's it's thoughtful. It it lays out the the learnings very clearly. I appreciate that you sought input from a really broad set of people and constituencies within Newton. Makes a huge difference in 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 bringing that together. I I also appreciate that you were able to bring in educator and staff input, which I know may have been a little challenging over the last couple of months. But I but I feel like that that thinking and that consideration for for our staff members is in there and and I appreciate that. I I want to support what Chris said earlier, which is I was part of the interview panel that that recommended you and not for a second have 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 I thought we didn't make the right decision. What what I what I think is is so important is is to be clear that I speak for myself, but I think this is probably reflected among all of us. As as the school committee, we, our goal is the success of Newton Public Schools in terms of supporting our students. And the only way we can drive that success is by making the superintendent successful. We we provide governance, we provide advice, we provide support. I think the term we have your back is an appropriate one to use in this case. This document lays out what I think is is fairly ambitious but needed. And and our goal, as as it gets fleshed out, is to do our our best to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you Rajiv. Emily, go ahead.
Just really quickly, I'm not going to rehash what everyone said, other than to say that I agree with what most people said. Ditto to Rajiv said in particular. So thank you Anna for this incredible document.
Thank you Emily. All right. One final comment on the entry plan from myself, seeing no one else having a comment. I think not only is it ambitious, it lays out a a vision for the district that aligns very closely with what I'm hopeful hoping that we will be able to achieve. And I echo everything my colleagues have said, but insert one additional thing which no one has said, which is in order to truly have your back over this very ambitious entry plan vision, we will need to have your back, each other's back, our our staff's back, our students back as we make sure that we can have a funding, additional funding that is sufficient to execute on this vision throughout the years. I don't know how we will do that, but it's important to make sure that that is part of the conversation that we're envisioning as we as we we look at your entry plan. Part of that will begin, I believe, on on Tuesday, Mayor Fuller, if I'm not correct, when there is a docketed item for a debt stabilization fund for the Newton Public Schools. Is that correct?
It's on a Monday. Finance meets on Monday and it's, I don't know if it's the twenty seventh. No, it's, I'll get you the date.
Well, get us the dates, but the point is, it'll be important for those of us who feel strongly that the entry plan is the way to go and that we need to support it to support all efforts to find additional funds for the Newton Public Schools. So thank you so much Anna. We really appreciate this wonderful, comprehensive, thoughtful look at where our district could go in the next few years. And with that, we will now pivot to our action items and discussion updates. And first up is a negotiations update. Kathy Shields, co-chair of our negotiating subcommittee, will present.
Thanks Tamika. So maybe I'll pick up where Tamika left off and that is that the, I think it's important for everyone to remember that the contract on which we settle is very tied to the ambitious entry plan that Dr. Nolan just outlined for us. I think as much as we value everything she has analyzed and brought and emphasized in terms of what we need to do to take Newton to the next level, some of those items have costs and it is critically important that in negotiating a contract, we do not put ourselves in a place where we are going to be unable to make any of those innovations that Dr. Nolan has outlined for us. I think we've all heard a lot in the public about a strike in another district that ended last week. And I think there are sort of two comments that I'd like to make about that. But following on this theme, the first is that in announcing that contract, that town's school committee said this agreement is inconsistent with the principles of the town's long-range financial plan. So to live within our means, we will need to make meaningful program, service and staff reductions in order to afford that contract. Having been on this school committee for six years and for several of those years have been in a place where we have made meaningful staff, program and service reductions. Speaking solely for myself, I am unwilling to put us in a place where a contract we sign obligates us to do that. Particularly when we face the amazing outline of items that Dr. Nolan has put before us that this district needs. So we need to find a way to enter into a fair contract that does not require us to cut staff, programs and services. We need to do that and we need to do it soon. And I want to correct the misimpression that may exist in the public, that the school committee is not negotiating in good faith. We have been negotiating in good faith for over fifteen months. We come to every negotiating session prepared. We make proposals. We respond to the NTA's proposals. We may not have as much money as the NTA wishes we had. But what I'm telling you is that the school committee's offer lives within the three point five percent increase annually that we have. The NTA's demands of us are nearly double that. Our current salary proposals include COLAs over the next three years totaling seven percent. Two percent in the current fiscal year, two percent in the following fiscal year and three percent in the third year. That's in addition to half of the Unit A members and different percentages of other unit members getting annual increases as a result of STEPS. Those increases are about four point two percent a year for our Unit A members and sometimes higher for other members, including our Unit C members. The other thing I want to say about the other towns contract that just settled is that COLA percentages are one thing, but it's important to look at what base salaries those COLA percentages add on to. So if Newton were to adopt the COLA percentages and the salary scale that that other town adopted, our educators would be taking a pay cut. I'll say that again. The other district's salary scale plus COLAs is still lower than Newton's. So the next time you hear the glib recital of we should get fifteen percent because some other district got fifteen percent, you need to look more deeply. You need to look at what's that fifteen percent on top of. There are an awful lot of districts out there that are chasing Newton's salary scale. We offer our our educators competitive benefits. Do we need to offer them increases? Yes, we do. And that's what's on the table. I'll also point out that Newton's benefits, including its health insurance benefits, are far more generous than that other towns, both in terms of deductibles, out-of-pocket expenditures. Sorry, deductibles and out-of-pocket expenditures. All of those things add up to what a district can afford. And on the school committee's website, under the negotiations tab, if you want to see exactly where Newton falls in comparison to that town and many others, you should look at the comparisons of our educators' salaries to those of, I think there are about twenty surrounding incomparable districts. Newton's in the top third. We offer our educators competitive salaries and we care about our educators. And honestly, sitting on this side of the table, I don't appreciate the rhetoric from members of the community that suggest that we are anything other than negotiating in good faith and people who care deeply about our students and our staff. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you Kathy. Questions from the members? Go ahead Rajiv.
Well said. Thank you.
So Kathy, tonight we heard several folks talking about the outside counsel that the school committees retained to assist with negotiations. Is that at all atypical of school committees generally and Newton specifically?
Not only has Newton always had outside counsel, but there is not a school committee in this state that does not have outside counsel.
Thank you. Last call for questions regarding the negotiations update. Go ahead Anping.
Apologize if my knowledge is a little bit limited. In terms longevity payments and retention payments, how popular among Massachusetts districts? Do we happen though?
I I I don't know that I can offer you any comprehensive comparison of our longevity payments, but ours are it's my understanding, I'll let Anna fill in some details, but it's my understanding that the amount of our longevity payments and the frequency with which we pay our educators longevity is better than many districts. Anna, do you have a specific comparison you'd like to offer?
Just most districts have some sort of longevity. They all look different. So for example, in my former district, we just had a a step at year twenty and another step at year twenty-five that you would receive a one-time lump sum. But Newton's is typical of what people get. So you hit a certain year and then you get that retention payment each year.
So both are?
It's a typical benefit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it's something that Newton values is retention of its experience to staff. So it's you know, budgets are our values, right? So if we want to retain people, that's why you have that benefit.
That that speaks to our Newton's, you know, our care and a passion to keep our staff. Happy to hear that.
Thank you Anping. And thank you Kathy for giving us the update on negotiations. We appreciate it very much. Continuing on to our next agenda item, this is an overview of the budget guidelines process that the school committee resumed last year after a lengthy pause doing budget guidelines as a school committee, shall we say. This year, I've asked Emily Prender to remain on the budget guidelines team and joining Emily will be Rajiv Parlikar to assist with that task. Paul Levy, who joined Emily in re- reconstituting the budget guidelines process last year will cycle off as Rajiv cycles on. Paul, I thank you for your service last year. Emily, would you like to remind everyone of that process?
Just briefly, because I know it's it's eight thirty and we have a lot to get through for the rest of the evening. So for those who are not familiar, the budget guideline process is essentially an opportunity for the school committee to give input to the superintendent. Ideally before, I think in this case is going to be during, the creation of the next year's budget. We usually have an ad hoc committee. Last year, as Tamika mentioned, Paul and I did that together. And then this year I am staying on for a year and then Rajiv is joining. Ideally next year, I will roll off, Rajiv will stay and then a new person will roll on. The role of the ad hoc committee is not to be visionary in any way, shape or form. It is a really more of an administrative role. And we ask all the nine members of the school committee, including ourselves who are on the committee, to give input into and write a document or a bullet item list or something along those lines and to get it to the committee so we can condense it into a single document, present it back to school committee for your vote and approval and then it gets sent on to the superintendent. We're a little late this year than we would normally be in the process, but I am hopeful that we'll be able to have something to vote on before January first. So during our last school committee meeting. And that's budget guidelines.
Thank you so much. Thank you Emily and thank you in advance Rajiv. We very much will appreciate your helping us streamline this process. So our next item for discussion tonight is an MCAS results annual report led by Katie Hoag, our chief data research, data and research. I can't get it. And Renee McCall, our assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. Welcome to you both.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to first start by saying that the MCAS is just one data point of many data points that educators in Newton use to evaluate and assess student progress as well as mastery along grade level standards. And so I just wanted to draw your attention to the data pyramid that was included in the memo to the school committee. I wanted you to realize that there are many data points that teachers use, including formal and informal classroom assessments. That might include unit performance assessments, quizzes and tests. And then informally, you could have exit tickets or warm-ups. And so teachers have those that they use every day to inform their instruction and to respond to student needs. So again, MCAS is just one data point of many. And I'll hand it over to Katie.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk through briefly some of the points that we made at in the overview for this comprehensive report and then Renee will talk about some of the curriculum pieces that are put in place in response to what we saw. So the report that you received for tonight looks at the results from the spring twenty twenty-three MCAS administration, so last spring. This report provides trend analysis for the past five years for MCAS testing where it's available in some cases, so some subjects and grades. We don't have five years of data for the current test. And it also looks at trend analysis by subgroups. We've also included a comparison to both state test scores and a comparison to some of our neighboring districts in the reports. Throughout the report, the analysis compares the spring twenty twenty-three results to both pre-pandemic scores. scores, so those are scores from spring 2019, as well as scores from last, or two springs ago, spring 2022. When we compare our spring 2023 performance to pre-pandemic scores, although we've seen some growth towards regaining our achievement levels prior to the pandemic, certain grades and subjects remain below our pre-pandemic scores. The exceptions are grade four math and grade four science, where we saw a return to pre-pandemic scores this past spring, and then grade 10 ELA, which we saw an increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations from pre-pandemic. We also saw growth in high school physics from last spring, so high school physics transitioned to the new next-gen MCAS last, in spring 2022. So we've only got two years of data for that assessment, but we saw growth from 2022 with 81% of our students scoring meeting or exceeding expectations in physics in 2023. Grade three in ELA and math remain areas of concern. We, the scores from spring 2023 for third graders in both subjects are below pre-pandemic scores and below last spring, or the 2022 scores. Just as a reminder, students who took the grade three tests last spring had their kindergarten year interrupted by the school closures in March of 2020, and then they had their first grade year in a hybrid format. We also noted that persistent opportunity gaps continue to persist across ELA math and science for students who identify as Black or African-American, Hispanic, Latinx, and students with disabilities. These gaps have remained consistent across the five-year period in the report. Opportunity gaps also continue to exist for English learners, but we do see the gaps decreasing for students who are former English learners who have exited that program. In spring 2022, we saw historically low writing scores on the ELA MCAS, both in Newton and across the state. In spring 2023, we saw improvement in our writing scores compared to 2022 in grades three through eight in ELA. Grade 10 saw a small decline in their writing score. Grade three had the lowest scores in 2022 for writing, but they had the largest gains in their writing scores in 2023, although grade three still has the lowest writing score across the grade levels. And then finally, when we look at growth, our average growth, which is measured by the student growth percentile or the SGP, the average SGP in ELA and math shows relative stability, falling in the typical growth range compared to pre-pandemic scores. Grade eight is the exception, where ELA, the growth scores for ELA and math fall into the high-growth range. And then finally, when we look at our average SGP by performance level, we see variation. The average SGP increases as student performance level increases, meaning that students who are scoring in the higher performance levels had higher growth on average, and we actually saw that pre-pandemic as well as in spring of 2023. So I'll turn it over to Renee.
Thanks, Katie. So in terms of what Katie mentioned around certain subgroup performance, we know we have work to do in that area. We wanted to lift up the important work of the Literacy Equity Project that started in 2021, focusing on grade one BIPOC students. And you might remember, there was a school committee presentation a couple of years ago about improvement in attitudes toward reading, as well as student performance on the BASS Assessment, as well as the I-Ready Assessment. And so that is really encouraging data that we know when we have targeted interventions, really honing in on getting to know students academically and personally, that we can respond to their needs. It's also important that we have high-quality instructional materials that are culturally responsive. We are super excited to be implementing EL education this fall in grades one and two, and K will be rolling out in January. Some grades three through five at certain schools are also implementing EL this year, and we're finding high student engagement. It is so exciting to see students involved in challenges that they're working collaboratively with their peers, and also writing deeply about topics that they're learning through literacy. So that's one of the ways that we're also addressing the writing scores. We are giving students more opportunities to write about things that they're learning about through EL education, and also an opportunity to have more at-bats at writing, where they're receiving feedback from their peers as well as their teachers, and then revising and editing those products. And so we also want to stay focused on tier-one instruction. We want to ensure that that is strengthened throughout the district for all grade levels. That is the core instruction that all students receive, so we want to be sure that we have that strengthened. Additionally, we are working with teachers to develop their skill and knowledge around looking at data to inform their instruction so that we can, again, continue to build strong tier-two interventions for our students using data inquiry cycles. Some other items that we mentioned in the memo are centered around math assessments. We're really taking a look at incorporating more fluency assessments for students in the younger grades, and then we're rolling out ST math across elementary grade levels to ensure that students have access and have an opportunity to practice skills that they're learning in Investigations III. And then also just to note that in science, we are in need of a full curriculum review. Right now, we are implementing grade-three science units that we piloted last year. We're also field testing K through two units right now, and we're hoping to take a look at grades four and five next year. And we'll, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to brag a little bit. So I was at the Metco Racial Equity Board, which I sit on as the largest, we're the largest Metco district in the state, and Metco just underwent a year-long review of all of the Metco districts, and they're coming out with a roadmap for what districts should have in place if they are to be a Metco district, so like a baseline. So for example, some districts don't provide after-school busing, so when the day ends, they have to leave. Or they don't allow students to start in kindergarten, they allow them to start later. So there's just some baseline things that Metco is trying to put in place. In that process of analyzing what works in Metco districts, they hired a national consultant to do a review of all the programs, and the Literacy Equity Project was actually cited as a bright spot by the national organization for what it did to change attitudes towards literacy and to engage families. So I would, they're first graders last year that we invested in, and so one would want to discuss in two years, what does their third-grade reading look like, except that we're mucking it all up by putting an entirely new literacy curriculum in in the middle. So I just want to say that to you all now because, you know, you're going to want to keep asking about returns on investment. When you go to a new curriculum of any type, there's always an implementation dip. But the good news is we're putting the tools in place to try to measure how we're doing. So, but I just wanted to celebrate that. I know the district had put a lot of effort into that program, and it certainly was noted, and the data was, actually will be published in the Metco report.
Thank you both so much. Appreciate that. Questions from the members about this really thorough, comprehensive report? Go ahead, Anping.
Well, Katie and Renee, thanks again for this very comprehensive report, and a lot of data to digest. And as you reminded us, MCAS is only part of the data. And so I know sometimes some people might jump the gun and say, oh, look at the data, you know, we used to be 10th grade, now, you know, 15, we dropped our ranking, you know, all that. So that's very easy and probably a little bit too cheap to say, to make the point. Now, just quickly, two points. I don't know if I'm accurate to say that. For grade three EOA mass, and here, you know, you guys noted, the performance is below pre-pandemic and last year's level. So do we happen to know some data to see if other districts have the same challenges or just Newton a little bit outlier? Because that kind of situation, you know, every district, at least majority district would have gone through this. So the challenge is not only to Newton. I thought one way to do that, probably we can look at, say, four, five years ago, when the average scale score between our district and the state average, which might give a little bit meaningful indication whether the gap between our Newton average score and a district, and the state average score. Of course, we will be higher than state average, I know for sure, Newton is Newton. But whether, say, 10 points higher, but now this year only five points high, which give you a little bit indication, of course, we cannot rely on the data. So I like to see that, which shouldn't be easy to, if you include the state average score, you know, compared with the pre-pandemic year. That's one thing I like to point out. So do not just look at our average score compared with four, five years ago, we dropped. But if statewide, you know, most districts dropped, so that's, that's, does not reflect our Newton is doing poor job. It's just all those challenges during the past few years for the kindergarten who start the school year, you know, online, and it was very challenging for those young learners. That's one. The other things, I look at the, again, the data, averages SGP, student growth percentile, which give us some indication whether we're doing better or average. And in a state, would say if SGP is about 60, that means we have high growth. And I look at the data, we happen to have grade eight EOA and mass, both are 61. I thought that was good, standing out among all those grades, grade eight. And we all know grade eight is very critical year. Kids, you know, some kids finally kind of wake up, oh, now we're going to high school, now we have to get serious. And again, I'm a little bit curious about the other districts or comparative districts, whether those districts' SGP also a little bit high, which is possible. But, but again, this 60 wasn't meaningful because we look at the whole statewide district. So that means we are better than 60% of the statewide districts. So that's, I think it's meaningful. So I think we should acknowledge eighth grade, but I don't want to sound too sure. Probably we still need to look at data. But I tend to believe our grade A students in EOA and mass did better. I don't know if the past few years, always about 60% or just this year happened to be better than in past few years. Because this is very kind of reliable data to show whether we made more progress against our peer districts, you know, statewide. But otherwise, you know, I'd just like to say, overall seems performance is not too bad. You know, we have challenges, but all districts having challenges after we came out of pandemic years. So, you know, but of course, there's room for improvement, no doubt. And that takes concerted efforts for everybody, for all stakeholders to work hard. It's not only students, school staff, teachers, parents, you know, district, and of course, financial support, you know, budget, everything to support. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping.
Can I just, this is the year that they reinstated the accountability system, right, Katie? And we are 80% meeting or exceeding targets, which is actually better than our pre-pandemic performance. So I just wanted to note that.
Good to hear that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional, oh, go ahead, Rajiv.
Two questions, and they may just need some follow-up, so I really don't expect that you'll have the answers now. The first is, when we look at the results, is there any way to tease apart the impact of the pandemic versus the impact of what we prioritize through the budget, what we're doing academically for the students? I don't know that there is.
No.
Obviously, we've put them together.
Yeah, that would be awesome, but we need to hire someone to do that.
So the second question then is, knowing that we can't do that, certainly looking at the subgroup scores, which was, which was really helpful. We, for years, decades, I think, have, have had a consistent disparity in scores or performance, right? And which is somewhat discouraging, because I know we're trying, we've been trying to address that for decades. Again, in looking at the scores, are those gaps consistent with what we saw before? Are they growing? Are they shrinking? It'd be helpful to understand that because we're, again, prioritizing helping groups that have traditionally had that gap. And the other question is, some of the peer comparisons also showed that certain other districts are doing better in supporting, again, in supporting MCAS results for those groups, right? Fully acknowledging that the MCAS is not the one and only source or metric for performance. Are there things we can learn from those other districts? Right? If they're much smaller, very homogeneous, it's a little tougher, but not all of those seem to fall into that category. So just, it would be, I think there'd be no shame at all in copying things that worked elsewhere, so.
So I can certainly answer that. So Rajiv, I actually have a website out of Yale that I can show you that tries to do what you said, which was to determine how did we fare, you know, through the pandemic and what were those issues? So I'll set you up with that, and you'll lose two days playing with it, it's that fun. The second part, I guess I just want to say is, our principals and curriculum people like Renee can reach out to their job-alikes to kind of hear about what are the things that they're doing that might be bright spots. That's one of the things we do with the Metco Collaborative, and we try to look at what are all those pieces that are in play that would allow us to steal bright ideas if we didn't already implement them. I do have to say that far and away, those cohort districts, we are the most diverse in terms of racial diversity, cultural, linguistic, number of schools. So it's, you know, but it's always good to steal ideas from somewhere else, so it can't hurt us to learn.
Yeah, I would just add on, Anna, that I do have an opportunity to meet with role-alike folks once a month, and we do share best practices and understand what's working for you and how we might be able to implement that here and vice versa. So I will certainly engage in that conversation, Rajiv, and I can certainly follow up.
Thanks, Rajiv. Any other questions for Katie? And wow, I'm literally.
Renee.
Renee. Sorry, I was looking at Katie and saying Katie in my brain. Sorry about that, Renee. Appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, both Katie and Renee. I appreciate that. All right. So continuing on, we have a mental health supports and structures across the district presentation. And as you might be able to tell, it's getting a little late in the evening, and we're getting a little tired.
Well, this is going to jazz you right up.
So I'm gonna say welcome and thank you. And Casey, if you could introduce everyone on the team.
I will start us off. Good evening, folks. So what we have tonight is a presentation on the mental health status of our students in terms of what we are seeing. We truly have the boots-on-the-ground folks who will be presenting to us tonight. We have first elementary, and then I have my secondary folks in the back. I'm not going to say too much because I want them to jump right in, given time and given the comprehensiveness with which they have planned and will present tonight. So to my right here, I have Maria Colby, who is an SEL coach but also is leading a lot of the MTSS work and the anti-ableist curriculum work too in the district. And then we have Jesse Krotik, whose title I will not say because there are many, many words to it, but I will let you say what your title is.
Oh, okay.
Please.
I'm the coordinator of elementary support stabilization and multi-tier assistance of support.
So without further ado.
So I just want to set you folks up that this is an intentional moment, which, A, capitalizes on requests from the members who wanted a presentation on mental health. So we have very few formal presentations. This was one of three. This was one of three requested all year. And second, I just doubled down on M T S S in my entry plan. So I've asked these folks to put some meat on those bones so you understand what that looks like from this perspective. And this is the social emotional health piece. The academic piece will come at a later time.
Thank you for that, and it's a privileged update you all. Thanks for having us.
If I could just jump in real quick, sorry about that. I just have a couple of notes that Anna reminded me of is while this won't jazz you up, I do think that it is it's eye opening in terms of where our students are. It's an honest assessment of where our students are currently.
So as as Casey said, we're here tonight to talk to you a little bit about, and we're gonna try to be as concise as we can, to talk about the social emotional needs and mental health needs within our elementary schools, as well as the systems and structures that are currently in place to Dr. Nolan's point within an M T S A framework to support this work. So prior to the pandemic, as I have spoken about a bit before in previous school committee meetings, we've seen a shift in the in the student presentation with in our classrooms with regards to their their mental health and their social emotional learning skills. And what we've seen since the since the pandemic is an increased need of students who are needing a variety of supports, including individual supports within within that multi tiered framework. And the complexity of these needs, both with regards to the lagging skills of our students and the mental health needs has expanded significantly. And disproportionalities within our structures of intervention persist with regards to our most marginalized, historically marginalized populations need for accessing these supports. What this looks like in our classrooms and our buildings, as I spoke to the lagging skills that really are the cornerstone of the ways with which our students access both 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 social experiences and their academic needs, things like self regulation, perseverance, frustration tolerance, collaboration skills, self management skills. We're seeing since the pandemic, a consistent decrease in those skills, as well as complex mental health needs within our classrooms. As I mentioned before, more and more students who are struggling with self concept, anxiety, mood, and 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 students and their families who are requiring really a significant amount of intervention, as well as wraparound support regarding our outside systems that we're having to provide for that that staff are having to provide for our students and our families.
And so as we look to more effectively measure the social emotional learning and mental health needs within our school, we really are so excited to share some of the preliminary panorama data with you all that will we will just be giving you more and more as the time goes on as we add the student survey coming in December. So we are really excited for this quantitative data, and we also want to continue to hold the really rich qualitative information that we continue to receive through the lived experiences of our educators. So educators such as Jesse and myself, who have the privilege of being in so many of our schools on a at a weekly basis. But most importantly, from our general educators, from our classroom educators that are consistently speaking to that that intensity and complexity of student needs. So we could share, you know, hundreds of stories with you all here tonight, but one some common threads that we see with that intensity is concerns around safety, around student safety, around their safety due to extreme dysregulation of students that does not always come in those big behaviors, but certainly can. And then thinking about complexity, we have one example here on the slide, but just a way to show, this is one example of showing the impact of those lagging S C L skills and mental health needs on all aspects of a school, the school day for our educators. You know, we know how to, so this example talks about thinking ahead to a new unit and the level of complexity in which our educators are having to think about meeting the needs of students that we know how to differentiate. We're very skilled at this. The educators in our district are, we can, they're not, they don't have time to speak to how strong they are in this work. But this amount of complexity is not sustainable for our educators, and we see the toll of that as it's not implementable in our current systems and structures.
So some of the quantitative measures that historically we've used to measure sort of where we're at with regards to social emotional learning and mental health in our district, historically, we've used the School Connectedness Survey, which time and time again identifies disproportionalities that persist among our, again, our marginalized groups, those who identify as male, black, free and reduced, needing free and reduced lunch, as well as our students with identified disabilities on I E Ps. We we also historically have used our stabilization data. As a lot of you know, our stabilization team at the elementary level is used to push in to support educators and students who are experiencing a significant and acute social, emotional, and behavioral crisis. As you'll see, there's one data point here from 2022, 23. We had 30 referrals for this highest level of social, emotional, and mental health support that we have at the elementary level. And you see here the disproportionality that we find with regards to those referrals. 63% of those referrals are boys. 43% of those students identify as black. It's important to note, I know, I know the school committee knows this. I believe it's 4.7% of the students in our district identify as black. So I just want to shine a light on that. And then from our friends at Riverside Community Care, in in 22, 23, excuse me, April 22 to November 22, there were 10 instances at our elementary schools calling Riverside for an evaluation of a student who was in crisis. So this is when Riverside comes in, provides an assessment for a student who is currently in a crisis to determine if a higher level of care is needed, anything ranging from outside therapy to inpatient care. The following year, we had 29 instances of assessments needing to be made by our by our partners at Riverside coming to our elementary schools to assess those needs of of these students in crisis. And speaking with my friends at the city mayor, I know you know this, but speaking with my friend Megan Kennedy at Health and Human Services, this is more on the qualitative side of things, but over and over again, we see more and more families within our city, multi stressed families needing a significant amount of support, accessing basic needs. So back to the panorama piece and thinking about using more quantitative measures to really understand what's happening here in the city. As Maria said, we're so pleased that we've been able to use panorama this year for the first time that we've been able to do this using some grant funding through D E S I. This year, we are rolling out both the teacher survey of student S C L skills as well as this student survey. The the classroom teacher survey, all of our schools this year will be using this survey two times at at least one grade level. Next year, we're gonna get to a point where we're using the survey three times during our assessment windows, and we will be screening all of our students. We're starting small this year, really to get grow that muscle of data inquiry. And then our student survey, which we are going to be using in all of our students will be taking this survey grades three through five. And we incorporated our School Connectedness questions into this survey. And we're looking forward to looking at the comparisons between the two.
So we do have a bit of data to show you today, but before we jump in, really just want to be very, very clear about what the qualifiers of this data are. The most important one to share being that this is a partial data set. So when we, and we we expected this due to our phased implementation plan, but we have about 3,300 students at the elementary level that were captured through this initial student or teacher survey of student S C L skills. And some of the other qualifiers there are just that, you know, we had many schools where the entire school was captured. And then we had others where a school chose one or two grade levels, and there were, they had varying reasons for doing that. And that could have implemented, it could have impacted the data in a way we can't really speak to. And then thinking about this design, the survey itself, it is a survey with seven domains, as you'll see, with one question underneath each domain to capture holistically that area. So those are some of the qualifiers, but again, 3,300 students, a really healthy data set that we wanted to show you the district overview within panorama today. So this graph shows the district summary for the 3,300 students that were captured in this data set. The two columns you're seeing here are the topic and the percentage favorable column. And what that speaks to is the percentage of students that showed the skill favorably. So this slide is the same data, just with the question added in. So what is this data really saying? This data is telling us that, again, for the 3,300 students captured, that 50% of our students are likely to engage in productive struggle when they are presented with a challenging task. 51% are self managing their focus during lessons. 57% are are confident in their ability to learn all of the material they're presented with. 61% are using the learning strategies that they've been previously taught. 67% are engaged in the activities of the school day. 70% are socially connected to their classroom community, and 81% are maintaining an emotional, a regulated emotional state throughout the school day. So one thing with showing the questions that we hope is helpful here is that these these data points are incredibly important as standalone S C L skills, certainly. But to look at the questions, it's so clear to see how each of these areas are direct facilitators for academic engagement and for academic success. So lastly, please, I'll say about this, and I know as we're moving along quickly here, but I think it's really helpful. We've talked about how it's really helpful to think about this data in the sense of a classroom. So if you think you're you're a classroom teacher, there's you're a second grade teacher, you have 20 students in your classroom. And we, I certainly know we have classrooms with more than that, but that's for the math, so forgive me for choosing 20. But so if we think of that this way, what this is telling us, what this is telling us, the lived experience is of our educators and of our students in our classrooms, that in that second grade classroom, for those 20 students, that 10 students, when they're presented with a challenging task, will be able to engage in a productive struggle, 10 will not. That same, the 10 are able to self manage their focus during lessons and 10 are not. That about 12 are confident in their ability to manage or to to that they will be able to learn the material presented in their classroom. Those same 12, that 12 will also are confident they'll be able to utilize taught learning strategies, and eight will not in both those categories. And in terms of our student connectedness, that we have 14, 14 of those 20 students are fully engaged within the aspects of their school day, and six are not. And those 14 students are socially connected to the classroom community, six are not. And that top one, which is a, which is a strength, relative strength, certainly, but when you think of this in a classroom of 20, that's 16 students that are able to maintain a regulated emotional state throughout the school, throughout the school day, and four that are not. So I think this is also helpful to think really of a classroom of 20, what do these numbers really mean for our educators, for our students, and for the work that we have to do? So what this really speaks to is that intensity and complexity of student need that we've referenced already, and that these are looming barriers for our educators, certainly now. So thinking about panorama, and we really are so excited for the platform and what it will be able to do for us, both in quantifying some of these more qualitative experiences that we're that we're living within our schools, but also to help us use the data within this platform to reflect on the effectiveness of our structures and systems and that we're gonna talk to you about now. So here's the promised M T S S, you know, structure, and everyone was waiting for it. But this is the vision of a multi tiered system of support for S C L and mental health. This is not new information, we know that. We've shared this through our S C L framework last year. But one thing that, thinking about that intensity and complexity of student need related to S C L and mental health, we know how important it is for us to be crystal clear in our what. So this is the what. This is the what are facilitators to mental health growth, social emotional learning growth within our schools? That all, that from the stance of equity, we need all students to have access to those tier one structures and systems, but some students will have access to that middle part, and what a small number may access for that tier three, but any student could access it at any moment, depending on how they walk into the school that day. So to actualize this vision, we have to look to the how. So here's our what. And the how is really who is sharing the lift of this work? This work cannot be on our general educators and our classroom educators primarily. Who is sharing the lift of this work? And who is best suited to fill the unmet needs at our school level to help those numbers change? Because we are not comfortable with those numbers. I don't think anyone here at the table is. So what, who who is best suited to help those numbers shift and to share the lift?
There's a lot of words on this slide, and I'm gonna be brief, but there's a few things I want to highlight here. To Maria's point, these are the individuals that are making up our tiered framework to support the social, emotional, and the mental health needs of our students. I want to highlight our social workers. I'm a social worker, so I'm gonna say us. But we, and us, we are mostly part time in nearly all of our elementary schools, point five or thereabouts. Social workers, I was so pleased to see in Dr. Nolan's presentation, her highlighting the need for for more social work F T E. Social workers, as you know, are uniquely qualified with a lens of social justice and equity to develop relationships with students and families proactively to help meet their needs of of the families and their students so that their students can hit the levels of achievement that that we hope for. Social workers, we provide clinical guidance to educators to understand the emotional needs of our students. We provide crisis response, more and more crisis response, as well as general education and special education intervention. Psychologists do much of the same work, including being, of course, being the keystones of our special education evaluations. I spoke a little bit about our stabilization program that responds to that highest need of of social, emotional, and mental health need. We're so pleased with our, that we have full time S C L interventionists in all of our school that provide crisis response and primarily evidence based tier two social, emotional learning intervention for general education students. And lastly, we're again pleased to have S C L coaches now point five in five of our elementary schools. And their job really is to partner with teachers to think about how we can, how we can improve tier one social, emotional learning experiences in our classrooms. And so to do this work, we've identified some barriers that that have been highlighted here, including social work F T E, the inequitable S C L coach allocation that I briefly referenced there, as well as the schedule and time and learning. Again, I I reference the fact that our social workers are currently point five, mostly point five in our buildings. I know you know this, but just to be clear, what this means is that we have buildings many days a week that do not have a social worker in the building to respond to crisis, to provide mental health or social emotional intervention, to bridge relationships with families and the outside systems and structures that we partner so closely with our friends at Health and Human Services and and the other agencies in the city to support the increased need, significantly increased need of our students and our families since the pandemic. I'm not gonna read this, but we, Dr. Nolan suggested that we use thought exchange as well to help us understand from the social workers' words, from the social workers themselves, what some of these barriers are. And I urge you to read this in your own time, but very quickly, they've identified time constraints, the need to respond to crisis, and and really feeling an inability to do the work that they know they need to do to support our students because of those time restraint constraints and being pulled in so many directions.
And so the second structural barrier that we have here is the inequitable S C L coach allocation. So just to state about the S C L coach job in general, we're really proud of how this position came to be in that it came from really creative thinking within standing F T E allocations. But we have reached the, because we've reached the limit of what we can do within our current line items, we are at a place where we are at a third of our schools with this position. So it's reasonable to think like, well, is that, is that a problem? Could other individuals pick up the load? But to think about the answer to that question is really to think about what the core features of this role are. So the S C L coach is an expert on and really the keeper of S C L data for the school. And we can think about this in relation to our math coaches, who are the keeper of math data, but not data for data's sake, data for what we're doing with the data. And the same for our literacy specialist, they are the keeper of the literacy data and what we do with that data. The same is for the S C L coach. What is our S C L data and what are we doing with that data? So they can be the keeper of that, but they are also uniquely qualified and positioned to partner with general education, partially because of their background and their experience within the the gen ed classroom, but also in their role itself of being able to brainstorm and thought partner, and then also say, I'm gonna be part of the solution with you. I'm going to go into your class three days a week for three weeks, and we're gonna get that structure up and running that we talked about. So this idea of moving beyond thought partnering to actual partnering with our general educators, given the intensity and complexity of need that we're seeing.
And I'm just gonna beat the drum, that grade level Wednesday afternoon P L Cs are sought after time by lit specialists, math coaches, math interventionists, special educators, school psychologists, guidance counselors. So I just want you to understand that without during the day coordinated time for these folks to meet with teachers, this stuff happens on the fly.
That's right.
Absolutely. And that leads beautifully into our structural barrier three of thinking about, this barrier is really around the the school day and the schedules and the restraints around that. So specifically related to S C L, the lack of S C L minutes outside of morning meeting and those few minutes at the end of the day for closing circle. and those few minutes at the end of the day for closing circle, leave educators in a place of looking at their panorama data, and now they're going to have student data in December to, I know that will be closely analyzed, thinking about, okay, here's an idea, here's an area I've identified, I know I need to provide this, this, this intensity of support in my classroom. We're starting with a tier-one lesson. The only way for them to do that right now is by skipping a science lesson that week or skipping thirty minutes of math or cutting something out. So, you know, you'll hear from Jesse in a minute about our work this year, and we're so excited for how EL and our, how our literacy curriculum has SCL work embedded in and, and referenced throughout the day. That's wonderful. And there's also needed time, given the data we're looking at and the, and the lived experience of our educators, where they need dedicated time to spend thirty minutes on, on one topic that they're going to then carry through throughout the week. And then some broader concerns on here that impact all content areas. Classroom schedules that vary day-to-day, so Monday is different than Tuesday than Wednesday than Thursday than Friday. There may be some content areas, you know, math happens two times in the morning on this day, two times in the afternoon here. Maybe, you know, a subject area is before or after a special. So there's this idea that there is not a predictable flow for our students and also for the individuals that support those classrooms. Content blocks are often not at the same time right now for a grade level. So think back to that experience, that example that we first shared, thinking about the teachers that are thinking about four different large groups of students that they need to be thinking of different types of methodologies and supports for, just for basic access of the content. In that example, those three teachers don't have that subject at the same time, which means they are in a silo. When if that subject area was at the same time for them, they would be able to share that lift of, of student differentiation in a different way, in a way that isn't right now systematized or sustainable. And then minimal to no common planning time. This is a timely moment to mention that because, because of our Wednesday afternoons with staff meetings and our conference window. Unless educators are in one of the very few buildings that have, have some common planning time throughout the month, the three first-grade teachers in a building that all teach first grade have not sat down together to do common planning in a month because of the Wednesday afternoon schedule. So this is the reality of some of the structural challenges that trickle down to impacting our students' wellbeing and general engagement within our, within our schools.
Before, very quickly, before I talk about this year, I want to make one more point about social worker FTE, if I could, that I neglected on my previous slide, which is, I, I started here in 2010 as, as a social worker. So I've been here about thirteen years, and as, as I've explained, we've seen the need of our students and families grow significantly. In the thirteen years I've been here, we've increased social work FTE very little. And of the social work FTE that we've increased, very little of that has actually been a financial add, but rather been a redistribution from other, from other departments. So I just wanted to make that point. This year, we're, we're so excited to partner with our, with our friends in teaching and learning to really understand the EL literacy curriculum, which has social, emotional learning competencies integrated. We're really excited about it. We are adopting this as our tier-one SCL curriculum. We're going to continue to refine our systems and structures for intervention. We, with, with some DESI grant money, we are going to be purchasing tier-two curriculum and resource, curricula and resources for all of our elementary schools to provide that SCL intervention. And we will, and we will be providing training for those folks. We will continue to partner with our friends in DEI to look at identity-affirming curriculum resources. We will continue the use of our panorama surveys and grow that data inquiry cycle muscle. And we look forward to both understanding the conditions within our schools and, and what systems and structures we need to further develop to meet those needs. And lastly, we're, we're looking forward to partnering with parents and really helping our families understand what work we're doing and really sort of further developing that partnership to meet the needs of all of our kids. And lastly, we've all seen Maslow's hierarchy of need, and this is really just to hit home the point that I, I hope we made, which is that we can't reach the level of achievement that we take so much pride in this district without being able to meet the basic needs of our students and their families. So we're grateful for all your time.
Thank you, Jesse and Maria. Any questions real quick before we transition? Go ahead, Chris.
Tamika, do you want to wait until after secondary folks go, or do you, up to you?
I mean, I, I think it's easier to do it as chunks since they're sitting there. But if there are no questions for these two, then we can, go ahead, Rajiv.
So first, thank you for coming in. I know it's late.
We're happy to be here.
Really appreciate it. Two questions. One is, how are we doing in terms of availability of wraparound support? Is it there? Because what you hear is that there is less and less of it and it's less and less available on demand, but...
Yeah, that's right. That's right. We are struggling to partner with agencies to meet the needs of our students and families. There's significant wait lists for, for all sorts of interventions and services outside of school.
We've had vendors, service providers, new agencies pop up, and it's great. Their models are wonderful wraparound services. And then when we ask the question is, are you fully staffed to meet our needs? And they say, we're trying hard.
Yeah. And, and I would just add that, 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 that's really across the board from, you know, outside therapy to inpatient care, as well as, I mean, our friends at the city work so hard with our families trying to access things like support for rent or utilities. And there's, there's just not enough to go around.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
Yeah.
And, and the other question is, the, the table showing the baseline data on, from panorama was, was useful. Do we have a sense of the overlaps or intersections? So the examples you gave, fifty percent of students perhaps don't have, don't approach challenging tasks with grit, as, as they describe it. Another fifty percent have challenges with self-management. In the way the data is collected, do we know if, if several of these challenges are kind of wrapped within, within one of our students?
Yeah, absolutely. So panorama, you know, this is the benefit of working with a, a company such as this. So absolutely, there's ways to break that down, and they, they have a lot of internal analysis that we can, that we can learn much more from that. At this point, you know, I, I view this yes as baseline data, but it's hard because it's still partial and it's still incomplete, right? So I think as we think ahead to the fall, when we have the, when this is being done three times a year for every student from the, the teacher SCL survey that the teacher is completing, we'll be able to do that level of analysis. As someone who's reviewing this with schools right now, I can tell you that the overlap isn't what I was expecting often. It's often disparate and not connected. And then there might be one student here or there that is receiving consistent ones or twos, but that's not the common experience as we're unpacking this data. So we're seeing a lot of fragmentation at the school level.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Emily.
Just real fast, first and foremost, I'm sorry that I'm not there in person this evening to say hello. But just to follow on Rajiv's question, so I went to the MAS C conference, which I know I'll be talking about when we get to it. But one of the presentations that I went to that I found fascinating was a collaborative who had wraparound services, just these very same mental health wraparound services that we're talking about. And just how, and it's a South Shore collaborative, and I'm just wondering, and I don't need an answer now, but just to put on the table, you know, whether or not there are any collaboratives nearby us that could help us with the service.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Sorry, what was the question?
Emily, do you want to repeat yourself?
Yeah, yeah. The question was whether or not there are any collaboratives that are local nearby that may help, be able to help with wraparound services that you were talking about at the end of your presentation of not really existing, because I had heard a presentation from a South Shore collaborative who is doing this work, actually.
Sorry, I even knew you were going to ask that, and I still didn't like register it. So there are those collaborative services. We are not members of those collaboratives at this time, but that would be something worth exploring, just like those same collaboratives offer things like professional development, and they also offer online courses, things like that for students. So this could be something to explore.
Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Go ahead, Chris. Thanks, Anna.
Thank, thank you. So, you know, as I read through all this, it really sort of struck me as the situation's not getting better. As we, you know, have moved and removed ourselves a couple of years from, from the pandemic. You know, as, as I hear what you're saying and, you know, talking about the need for, you know, social workers and Anna talking about that same need and the like, I mean, the, the answer seems to just be at this point in time, this is, this is a, I don't want to say there's a solution because we don't know if there is a solution, but resource-driven is, is the direction of thinking about how do we attack this better?
Yeah.
It's, it's simply a matter of, of resource constraint, or I guess, you know, in things like time on learning, I mean, that's not a resource constraint per se, but a structural, you know, impediment and something that's subject to, to negotiation. Am I, am I assessing that kind of correctly, or?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think in terms of, it's about having the right individuals in the building to be able to then utilize the structures and systems that we know need to happen. So I think it's, it's both and. It's having the individuals there. And we're seeing that having these two positions, that these are areas that when those, thinking about those two positions, being able to fill some of the unmet needs that are currently existing in schools, our, our working theory is then that will allow all five of these, four really at the building level, to be able to do their roles as designed and be able to more effectively meet this moment in time where we are.
What you'll hear some of from the secondary folks too, and elementary folks have reported this, is that a lot of our mental health professionals right now are focused on tier-two and tier-three, and they're so stretched that they can't get to the tier-one. So we're lucky in the sense that in our district, we have the structures in place, right? Like you said, time on learning, that's a whole other thing that ideally we'll get to at some point. But we do have the structures in place. We have tiers. And we have, to some extent, resources for our folks to pull from. We just don't have enough of those folks.
Yep. And one real quick, just in terms of thinking through, you know, I, I had sort of had this hope that, you know, as we, we get cohorts of kids coming in at the kindergarten level who, you know, were in their infancy or very young age, you know, during the pandemic, and we would see less of it. I know from conversations I've had with Anna, that does not seem to be the case, and there's not a reasonable expectation that's happening at least in the next couple of years. How do you, how do we kind of forecast that? Is there a good way for us as a committee, as we think about, you know, sort of that five-year plan and what we need and budget, you know, even from just a, you know, not to be sterile about it from a budgeting standpoint, like, how do we think about what that need looks like in the years ahead?
That's okay. One of the things that, again, they've spoken about in the secondary folks will talk about is that we don't have time and there are other competing demands to explicitly teach social, emotional skills, right? So we know how to teach grit, perseverance, emotional regulation. But where is that time to do it and who's going to do it? There are great curriculum out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. But, but I think in terms of forecasting, it's thinking intentionally and making space for, and folks to do the work to teach these skills explicitly. Because as you mentioned, and Kathleen Browning was here, was here about a month ago, speaking to the needs currently that she's seeing at NECP, which is that these students are coming in lacking some of the social skills for school readiness. And then that, that compounds as they make their way through the grades.
Thanks, Chris. Anping and then Mayor Fuller, and let's do, try to be brief.
Okay, thanks. I know time is running out. You know, this SCL now is really getting into the mainstream now. I remember ten or fifteen years ago, people talking about SCL and, and tried to advocate for this service. Now, let me ask a general question, probably a little bit personal questions. Jesse, I heard you say you've been in the school system for thirteen years.
Yeah, since 2010.
I'm, I'm curious. It seems there's increased needs for SCL.
Yes, that's right.
If I understand correctly. Now, does that mean students, society as a whole is getting more challenges in SCL? Or because we're doing better job to diagnose, to, to kind of get to know those students when things are, are, are turning to some difficult situation and you guys can see this? I'm curious if you have any personal...
I, I do. I, I, yeah. I mean, you know, in, I think a, a lot of us, when we started this work, there were few students that we had to explicitly teach lagging social and emotional skills to. Because to Kathleen's Browning, Browning's point, I think a few weeks ago, and to our point at a previous school committee meeting, in fact, and tonight, students were coming to school largely with those skills intact, having been developed. There were always students that, that needed to be explicitly taught these skills, but they were few and farther between than they are now, where we're seeing more and more of those students who need to be explicitly taught those skills. And that's been a change in the thirteen years that I've been here, for sure.
So that, that reflects the society's overall change?
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think it has to do with us being able to identify the lagging skills in our students. I think that the lagging skills are more pervasive than they once were.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Anping. Go ahead, Mayor Fuller.
I was just going to say the same thing that I think Jesse said, and he is more qualified to say it. From working, obviously here, we're thinking a lot about our pre-K to age twenty-two-year-old young people. Although I think our teachers are interacting with parents all the time, or caregivers all the time. From the city hall perspective, whether it's whether the social workers embedded in our police department, those embedded in our senior services department, those who are working out of city hall. The, I, I've been mayor for six years. This started pre-pandemic, was accelerated during the pandemic.
That's right.
And is accelerating still. It is not stabilizing. We are seeing the, the social and emotional wellbeing and the mental health of adults of all ages from twenty to ninety, stressed out in dramatic ways. And I really want to be clear, of all incomes, of all backgrounds, of all ethnicities, of all races, it's pers, it is real so that one of my journeys in learning is understanding. I didn't, six years ago, I didn't understand the word social, emotional learning. I thought it was social, emotional health. The ability that our teams have to actually teach these skills from NEPC on, is there if we have the time to do it, the time to plan to do it, and the adults with those skills surrounding classroom teachers and supplementing so that certainly help with the tier-two and tier-three, but the tier-one stuff.
Thank you. I'd just add one, one, if I don't mind, if you don't mind, one comment. I, I'm so glad that you're speaking to the, to the wellness of our, of our adults as well, because although I'm always inspired by the resilience of our young people, we know that our young people are often only as well as the adults that surround them. And so I appreciate you mentioning that.
Thank you, Mayor Fuller. Thank you very much, Jesse and Maria. I appreciate that. Let's bring up the secondary team and with abject apologies for the lateness of the hour.
So next up will be a similar mental health update from, um, our middle school and high school representatives. I'll give a quick introduction here. Um, actually, I'll have folks do it themselves, um, if you don't mind, and then I just have a couple of, um, things to say and then we can jump right in.
Okay. Uh, I'm Dr. Jordana Lesperance. I'm a school psychologist in Newton. I primarily work at Bigelow, but I have a number of other roles. So I've been able to work with all four middle schools.
Dan Rubin. I'm the director of school counseling at Newton South.
And I'm Beth Swodorska, the counseling department chair at Newton North. Thank you for having us.
Um, so one quick thing that I want to mention is that the five presenters that we have tonight, um, have been in the city, working in the district for a very long time. So what they represent tonight is not just what they have been seeing over the last couple of years and in particular, the last few months, um, but really the cohorts of students that I, they have seen come through. And so their experience also informs what they're reporting on tonight too, um, which just I have to underscore that. Um, so I won't read off of this slide, but the goals are very similar in that we want to provide a, uh, update on where our secondary students are with regard to their mental health and identify again, based on experience, um, but also data that we have both qualitatively and quantitatively, uh, what the barriers are.
Is it the same slide?
No.
That's okay. Next slide.
Sorry, I'm a different audience.
We, it's just a different slide deck.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. Let's see if we go down instead.
I pulled those from the school committee. Um, let me see if I can find the other ones if you want me to look for them.
Okay, great. Um, so this is a representation which we saw earlier with Maria and Jesse in terms of what the vision of MTSS is in terms of the folks who are involved, um, in the different tiers. And again, this is ideally general educators, deans are involved in the delivery of tier one services for all students. And then as students need it, when they need it, we have folks at the ready to provide tier two and tier three supports.
Yep. Um, so just you've heard quite a bit actually already from Jesse and Maria, um, but you know, as we're speaking to the state of mental health services in the schools, um, I just want to acknowledge a lot of what we're hearing is about some of the ways that we're not meeting student needs as effectively as we would like to. And I just, I didn't want to let this moment pass without acknowledging, um, just the extraordinary work of mental health staff across the district, um, who are dedicating, you know, a hundred percent and then some, um, on behalf of Newton students. And, uh, you know, so that's counseling and psychology staff at the unit A and unit B levels, but also behavior therapists, SEL interventionists and coaches, uh, principals and school nurses and even central office staff who have to go above and beyond, um, to mask some of the systemic underinvestment in tiered supports, um, that, that we've seen. Uh, you know, it was just a decade ago that Newton as a community experienced the trauma of multiple suicide deaths. And in a lot of ways, you know, we focused on the superficial wounds of that. Uh, we've developed programming to support acute needs at the tier three level, um, but without necessarily an accompanying investment in, in infrastructure of tier one curriculum. Um, and at least at the secondary level, a lot of that investment has been in special education and not accessible to a large majority of our students. Um, you know, for 10 years, uh, brilliant and committed colleagues, um, have been pouring their hearts into it. And, you know, for some students, their counselors or a social worker who they have a connection with might be the only person, um, with whom they dare to let their guard down enough to be vulnerable. And certainly many Newton families whose children have had acute mental health needs, um, understand that professionalism and care that I'm talking about. Um, but 10 years later, you know, those needs, as we've just heard, are continuing to rise, perhaps rising, um, you know, more, uh, faster than they have previously. And, um, you know, small infusions of incremental change, um, haven't really allowed a vision to take hold. Um, so I'm super excited that we're here tonight. Uh, I can speak to just myself and my nine years in the district. Uh, this is the first time that input, um, from this group of individuals has been sought in the budget development process. Um, and it just made me think of, you know, sort of the, the proverb that the, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, but the next best time is now. Uh, so it's, you know, to just to set the stage here, uh, well past time that, you know, we're looking at systemic investment in social emotional learning and mental health. Um, so with, you know, this, uh, slide here about just a robust tiered system of support, um, a couple of key pieces that I just wanted to draw attention to, um, though much of this you've heard, um, already this evening. Um, but again, it's that idea of needing to systematize the support so that students are receiving what they need proactively, um, without the need to struggle in order to access, um, the supports and services that they might need. Uh, so, you know, a strong tier one foundation, uh, part of that in the work that we're doing at the high school level is framing mental health as an asset that we develop. Uh, for a long time, uh, the terms mental health, mental health diagnosis, mental illness were used kind of interchangeably and focusing on mental health as an asset and thinking about, you know, what do we do to build those muscles through skill development, um, has been a shift in the way that we're thinking and talking. Um, and part of that, you know, the, the tilling the soil to do this work is challenging some internalized beliefs about, um, you know, what are social emotional, what is social emotional learning? Um, you know, if we can jump to the next slide, yeah. Uh, this graphic here, it actually speaks to a little bit of what Jesse talked about in terms of lagging skills. Um, and the, the image up there, uh, it actually comes out of the collaborative and proactive solutions work that, um, uh, it is underlying a lot of, um, the approaches that we use in some of our special education programming. But the essence of this is that kids do well when they can, when they have the skills to achieve whatever the expectation is. And that when the environmental demands, um, of a situation exceed the skills that have been acquired and developed over time, uh, that students might present in some challenging ways. So when we think about mental health, if we're going to move away from thinking about mental health as just something that is about diagnoses and, uh, and labels and we're going to meet all students' needs, we need to recognize that regardless of whether there is a diagnosis or not, regardless of what that diagnosis is, if we think about, uh, lagging skills, um, what we can share is that, you know, in the schools, we are regularly seeing that manifest as dysregulated emotional control, behavioral control and/or arousal level. And sometimes it's all three of those things. Uh, so, you know, as we are working to support students in those situations, it really is about skill development. And at the time being, we are, as Casey said, you know, a disproportionate amount of that is taking place at the tier three level. It, we are in reactive mode much of the time. And, um, what we're really, um, recognizing the overdue need for is more, uh, proactive programming to build these skills and making sure that, uh, students have the ability to down-regulate and modulate that emotion, behavior and their energy levels. Um, so through teaching the social emotional skills, um, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, using evidence-based curriculum that is already out there, uh, we hope to be able to address students' needs, um, more, in a more timely fashion and more proactively.
So, um, we're going to talk a little bit about the overall trends we're seeing and then we'll be a little bit more specific around middle school versus high school. So a lot of what you're going to hear from us, you've already heard at the elementary level. So we can be a little bit more brief, um, but the problems are the same. And we are seeing from multiple sources, our youth risk behavior survey, our signs of suicide, uh, which is a program that we put in as a result of that terrible year. Um, we, we always find kids who are struggling, who with a signs of suicide, we always, every school that does it finds kids that we didn't realize had depression or we didn't realize were thinking about suicide. We're lucky we have that. But again, that's very, um, reactive in that we find them and then we have to find the services to help them. Um, our youth risk behavior survey, which is in front of us, I don't know if you want to talk about it, um, certainly shows that we are seeing an increase in, in students reporting thinking or engaging in self-harm or seeing increases of feeling unsafe in school, especially around our transgender and gender diverse populations, um, across all levels. And I have to say that if we had more time and more staff to do tier two supports, that would be a great place to put that, to work with students who identify as transgender or gender diverse, to help them develop those skills so that they can advocate for themselves and they can work towards feeling safer in school. Um, we also see that we have a number of initial referrals, again, as Dan was mentioning, at that tier three level in terms of looking for special education support for mental health related concerns, particularly around anxiety and depression. Um, we, I've, I've, I've been in the district for 15 years. I started in elementary. I'm now in middle. Um, anxiety has always been a problem. It's, this is not new, but the rates at which we're seeing it and the intensity at which we're seeing it is definitely increasing. And again, we have, as we've mentioned, systemic barriers to accessing these supports. Um, we've already talked about the need for, for more staffing and more time. Again, the more that we could put into tier one and tier two, it would reduce the need for tier three and it would allow all of our mental health staff, our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, our SEL interventionists, our SEL coaches to engage in more tier one, which would allow that foundation so that students then didn't get to the point where they need to access tier two and tier three. So in terms of middle school, um, again, we're seeing a lot of anxiety. Um, all four middle schools are very different, but I have the chance to meet with all of the middle school mental health staff. Um, we actually just met two weeks ago and we're all seeing the same trends. They develop a little bit differently depending on the building you're in, but the anxiety then looks like develops into school or class avoidance. So we're having kids who are having trouble just getting in the building and they, we, we're, we're working hard to get them in. We're working hard to make it a welcoming place. We're meeting them at the door. In some cases, people are going to homes to try to help them. We're making phone calls. Sometimes we have kids who can get in the building, but they can't get into the classroom. And so then they're in my office or they're in the counselor's offices or we're finding a space for them where we can, we can set them up with support and we're working on plans to get them in. We've definitely seen increases in students transitioning to and from hospitals or day programs. And we run into the problem that you mentioned, which is that there is not a lot of outside resources. So we have students who are waiting to be placed in programs and we have to support them while they are waiting for that. And then we get to the skills deficits. I think, um, you know, Chris, I think you were saying, kind of thinking about that post-pandemic piece for these kids that are coming in, they're not post-pandemic because they're still dealing the repercussions of having missed those years, that socialization. And we see that. We see that, um, in the behaviors that we see, we see that in the kids, uh, not being as resilient, not being able to bounce back, um, having very little ability to tolerate discomfort. So, you know, we're, we're bored, we're in line, we're waiting. We as adults know that we can, we can do that. We can look at our phones. We can think about the things we need to do. We have kids who as soon as they start to feel uncomfortable, have to, have to leave the situation, have to move because they don't have the skill to figure out what do I do to regulate? What do I do to stay here? How do I manage this here in this room? And then all of this comes out in, of course, executive functioning, which is the big buzzword in, in, um, education, but it just means that these kids don't have the organizational skills, the regulation skills, um, whether it's behavioral regulation or emotional regulation, or even just sort of cognitive regulation, being able to prioritize what they need to do first, which means then they're overwhelmed. And when they're overwhelmed, they start to feel anxious. And when they start to feel anxious, they have to get out of the situation. So it's, it's sort of a very big vicious circle for them. Um, and my personal concern is that the more of this we see, the more that kids feel like they're working hard, but not getting that same in return. And they're going to disengage and they're gonna, they're gonna stop being interested in school. And we're going to see more and more kids needing that tier three because we haven't been able to take the time to teach them at tier one, how to manage all of these things.
At the high school, boots on the ground. Um, from a granular perspective, we're seeing very similar things. So it's nothing new, but on any, any given day, a student is going to drop into a counselor's office when a counselor had already a boatload of things that on their plate that they're expecting to do. That all goes out the window. That's when an email to a family doesn't get sent. That's when another student is thinking about, did I sign that ED agreement? That's when something else. So all of these things are going on at the same time, but when you have a student in crisis or what they may think is crisis, and by the time you figure out whether it was a real crisis or not, there was a lot of work that was put into that one student. And so you've probably heard this before, but what happens in any counselor office, whether it is general ed or special ed, you can have three students on someone's caseload and that'll take up 85 to 90% of their time. So what happens to all the other students on that caseload? And it's really about balancing and these people are working very, very hard at what they're trying to do for the safety and the teachable moments for the students. Also that being said, at any given time, bunches of counselors are emailing and contacting teachers and saying, this kid is not functioning daily very well. They can't come to your class. Can you give an extension? Teachers are having to manage and balance all of these requests and the different types of things with students, whether they aren't a plan or not. So it really is such the responsibility, it's a shared responsibility for everybody in our buildings from pre-K all the way up to grade 12. And it also does not matter what curriculum level these students are in. It could be from CP to AP. And so it's really about figuring out, there are skill deficits and what we can do, but really it's about how that we can get that infrastructure. You know, we believe that screenings can be very valuable and, and the things that we want to put in place, but we have to make sure that we have the resources and the staffing to get it done. Um, and all these things that you see, one student with school refusal, it is days, weeks, even months upon what we need to do, working with the court system and working with, you know, every kind of resource we can imagine. Um, and when it comes to hospitalizations, you know, our students who are waiting for a bed, they go into the hospital, they come out and we have a reentry meeting typically, of course, to try to meet their needs. And a student will look at us and say, okay, I'm, I'm just going back to my classes? And they look at us and say, if like, that's it? And I say, well, you'll have check-ins and maybe a reduced day and that kind of thing. But what we lack is a program that post-convention type of, you know, soft place to fall that they're still can get access to their academics, but that social emotional support so that they can make sure that they're pulling from that toolkit of those types of skills that they have learned. But it doesn't have to be from a hospital setting and that's what we want to, we really want to prevent. And so those types of things that happen on a daily basis, and then we want to make sure that everybody's feeling that they have the energy and the wherewithal to provide the right kind of information and support for our students.
Uh, so just to share a little bit of data, uh, so over the last four years, um, through William James College, their interface referral service from the city of Newton, uh, they're receiving about 500 referrals annually, um, about 55% of whom are school aged children. And most of those are people looking for individual therapy, top presenting issues, anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation. So that's just who is actually seeking support through William James. Um, you know, I, I don't have all of the statistics sort of off the top of my head, but, uh, there's a lot of evidence out there that, you know, from the first presentation of a, uh, mental health issue to the time that someone actually seeks treatment is on average about 10 years. So when you think about the amount of under reporting that exists in this data set, um, it's mind blowing. In addition to that, we've been in touch with, um, people through the Newton Youth Outreach Program over at Riverside. Um, and just from 2021 to 2022, they saw a 62% increase, um, to the next year, 22, 23, in terms of referrals made to Riverside. And they told us that they have already on November 20th surpassed the 21, 22 number and are already approaching that 22, 23 number. And we're only about a third of the way into the school year. Um, so that's just, you know, again, another indicator of the level of demand that we're seeing. So, you know, similar to at the elementary level, um, we're looking at a couple of real barriers, um, to being able to meet student needs more effectively in the true MTSS system. And, you know, part of that is about, um, just the, the infrastructure, the staffing. Uh, so we talked to Beth, you know, referred to. So we talked to, Beth referred to sort of a model for programming that exists in many high schools for a transitional program for students regardless of special education status, students who are transitioning back into school out of an extended absence, or who are being stabilized and need that support as a preventative measure to try to either, you know, hold off the need for a level, hospital level of care, or just are not able to access learning in the classroom environment during the day, but need a structured place in the school where they can access learning. So that's certainly one piece. You know, another piece that I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up is, you know, going back about 10 years, the high schools' wellness programs were a full four-year, year-long requirement, students who were required to take courses in wellness. Staffing was reduced, we're now at a point where in both high schools, the graduation requirement is only five courses in wellness. And part of what was lost was sort of that emotional and spiritual wellness, that our wellness programs were sort of, you know, a model for other districts around the state. One of the things that, you know, we've talked about is there is a curriculum that is out there that's a modified version of the DBT, Dialectic Behavioral Therapy Program, called Stepset, it's Skills for Emotional Problem Solving in Teens. It's a phenomenal curriculum, and it's something that we have begun to work with a little bit as like a Tier Two intervention in some of our special ed programs, but the model for that is teaching that in the classroom for all students. And, you know, it would be wonderful if we were at a place where that was a required wellness course taught by, you know, a mental health professional. So there are some ideas for high-leverage investment that can equip students with skills, but we really, we need the infrastructure investment to make that sort of thing happen. Gotcha. Just the one other piece that I would say about the second, on the right, like the structural barrier, number two, just where it gets to competing demands in the high school level. So we have talked before about wind blocks. Wind blocks are, were sort of seen as like a panacea, you know, we're going to be able to solve all of our problems through wind blocks. And when you consider school counselors who have caseloads of 180 students at four different grade levels and, you know, trying to put together curriculum, one, it's sort of that on-the-fly development that Dr. Nolan talked about, but two, it's, we have students who will say to us, I don't have time to come to see my counselor or participate in a group to get mental health support, because I have to go see my teacher because I'm getting a C in this class. And so we're in competition with academic intervention and with other kinds of learning opportunities that students are just peeling the sweeties. So just an area of our constriction.
So this is just to drive it home again, that the structural barrier running a dink around Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three is really, you've heard this already multiple times tonight, most of our staff are really dedicated to those Tier Two and Tier Three, leaving not a whole lot of time to collaborate with general education and to coach them through Tier One. The best example I can give of this is that recently, one afternoon, a counselor had four kids in her office, and she had to triage what was happening. One kid was there because they were overwhelmed and needed a space to decompress, and another kid was there on their scheduled break, another kid was there because they had to tell the counselor something, they just couldn't stay in class, they had to tell it right now. And then another kid was there because they were so anxious, they were crying. And so this counselor had to sort of triage and sort of, okay, your break is over now, you're going to go back. Okay, you just need a space, you're going to sit here. Okay, you're overwhelmed, let's talk it through. And she managed it beautifully, because all of our counselors and our mental health staff do. That is the kind of thing that if we had more Tier One supports in place, the student who was overwhelmed would have learned some of those skills to be more organized, to be able to engage. The student who was just too anxious to be in class would have learned the skills to self-regulate and stay in the classroom. The student who just had to tell the counselor the thing right then would have learned those skills to tolerate that discomfort, hold on to it, and stay in class. So we're really seeing it every day that we are really lacking in this one area. And it does, as the slide says, it really does mirror the sort of the current trends in public schooling, that we're all trying to get the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports in, and everyone's doing it a little bit differently.
Just the one big picture comment that I would make twice tonight, I actually had referenced to return on investment. And I think one of the most challenging concepts around this work is that the return on investment can't be quantified. It is open-ended, and, you know, this is sort of the drive here that sort of facilitates everything else happening, but there isn't really a measurable outcome. So, you know, this has to be a values investment and not necessarily something where we are going to be able to sit here a year from now, two years from now, and quantify what that means.
Thank you. That's what the slide says, and that's exactly... Believe me, tonight I need the prompt, so I really appreciate you all being here. Questions from the members? I know it's very late, but this is such a weighty topic and important one that if anyone has a question they'd love to ask of the team right now, please do, but keep it very brief. Go ahead, Rajiv.
Thank you again. This is a follow-up, so you're not expecting an answer now. I think in a previous presentation, Beth, you may have talked about caseloads, right? We had the baseline caseloads before the pandemic, kind of immediately after the pandemic, what the caseloads looked like. At some point, it'd be great to understand what they look like today and what we would think of as a reasonable level for caseloads at the high schools and at the middle schools. Again, feeding into budgeting, feeding into other things, that gives us a sense of what the gap is, right? My assumption would be, given the higher needs that we're seeing, the target caseload might actually be lower than it was before the pandemic for each provider. So, but at some point, it would be very helpful to see that.
Thanks, Rajiv. Go ahead, Emily, and then Anping. Again, reminder to keep, be brief.
Super quick. First is, I second what Rajiv is requesting. I've actually been asking about caseloads since I got on school committee, so that would be great data to have, that's one. Secondly is, how much of an uptick has there been in school refusal? And I know that it has started before the pandemic, but how has it been exacerbated going forward? If that is too long of a question to answer now, I am happy to get it later. So that's my question.
Thank you, Emily. Go ahead, Anping.
Thanks again, and I really wish that more parents would listen to this kind of, you know, presentation, and I love to hear and, you know, help to refresh. This is important. We talk about MCAS scores. Now, this is a part of the school performance. You know, you do not have data to show, or you might have some data, but people are not paying attention to that data, you know, but that's critical. Now, one quick question. I don't want to add any more cases to you guys already overload, but I also happen to be approached by some Asian parents, you know, high school parents, they tell me that my son lost interest, did not want to go school. Oh, by the way, they got A in AP courses. But I said, irrelevant. If the kids didn't want to go school, something wrong, you try to find out. They might tell you something, different stories, oh, my friends moved out and I could not take one course, so... There must be something. So those parents probably need educated before things get out of hand. You know, I was told by some kids, two weeks, did not want to go school, and the parents had to force them. So in that case, I think those parents really need to be educated. And I remember Jesse said one thing, the young kids are only as well as their parents. I said, boy, that really, I want to tell my friends, or, you know, my network, please read this, it's a little bit harsh. Your kid's only as well as you are, but that's probably true, you know? So thanks again. I know the SEL now is getting bigger, bigger now. You know, we don't have time to talk about how much data and how your daily work, I really want to know, you know, compared to five years ago, how more workload now, as you just mentioned, for kids in the office, how to deal with that? If emergencies come along, you have to really be careful. If something happens, then you will be, you know, accountable for that. Thanks.
Anping, just a quick response. If you look at, and I know it was very long and it was included in the packet to school committee, the YRBS information, if you look at that, in particular, I want to point to two pieces. One is sense of belonging. In middle school, our Asian students are feeling, their sense of belong is lowest out of all other students. So it's interesting that you bring up that data point, that you had Asian parents reaching out to you about that. Grades may look great, do they feel like they belong in the school community? Kids are not endorsing that. And then the other piece is how stressful is your life overall? If you're looking at middle and high school, we're looking at 78%, 85% of our kids feel stressed. Now, it's particularly high for our TGD, our transgender, gender diverse population is incredibly high. That's probably for me, if you look at YRBS, is the most alarming subgroup that we have to pay attention to, or more attention to. But those are the two pieces, stress and belonging.
I'm going to share the data with my network.
These do, and it's broken out, actually. Katie Ho did a great job in terms of looking at previous years too, and how we compared this year versus previous years.
Thank you very much.
Anping, we can also cut out this presentation and send it to you and to the community, and you can feel free to email it with your framing to any constituents that you would like.
That's very helpful. Probably we can take off some data, make it a bit more compact, and so it's easy, highlight certain things. That would be wonderful. And I wish there would be some committee forum really to highlight this urgent needs now. It's getting more and more serious, you know, after, you know, pandemic and other issues, you know, nationwide, the drug use, the drug-related deaths is getting high and high. I could not believe this country, but that's another topic we don't have time to talk now. Thanks.
Thank you, Anping. Questions? Any final questions, final thoughts? Thank you very much. Oh, go ahead, Hannah.
I just recap, I just want to make sure. So workload changes since five years ago, how has school refusal changed? Meeting excerpt to video to be sent around. Caseloads before pandemic, after the pandemic, and now, and what is a reasonable caseload and what's our recommendation? Those are the things. Okay, so we'll work on that response. Okay.
Thank you, Jordana, Dan, and Beth, and thank you, Casey. It's a ton of information. Next year, we note an hour for this topic, to be conservative, that is. Jill, with apologies, do you mind if, I mean, we can power through, or we can... How are you feeling?
Can I just give the present?
Yes, you may. Absolutely. And Emily, to you...
I can just write a memo.
Emily, how about we, yeah, we'll do that next time, or we'll find a different format. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Jill.
No one's staying.
Here for you, Jill, here for you.
Right, this is very, you know, titillating topic. So I'm back for our next batch. There's, sent a memo, sent a draft policy. I'm going to skip over largely the recommended ones for removal, they're all related to personnel matters that are largely, they're redundant essentially, and they were recommended through the audit of MASC to take out. So if anyone has any questions about those, you know, I'm happy to answer them offline or here, but I don't think those are the ones that are really meaty. We did put on a proposal for a new policy that we probably should have had before. It's, it's, nothing's mandated on this topic from DESI, but strongly recommended that we have a policy around this. And there've been a couple of different ones that we drew from to come up with this one. So it's, there's no, it's not track changes because we didn't have one. Some of them are very basic, and this is policy LBC relations with non-public schools. And there are some that are a little bit more detailed. We took the Middle Road, which has covered what we need to, that we think is necessary and also provides enough information, but also links to the lengthier, wordier document. Just as a quick background, under 76, Section 1, for some reason, school committees in the city or town in which a private school of any type would like to open is tasked with approving them. There's no guidance, I mean, there's no legal definition, there's no statutory, all it says is, the language is, you know, you shall, when you make a determination that the instructional program equals that of the town's public schools and thoroughness, efficiency, and progress made. That is not defined anywhere. What DESI has done is provided a document that was recently updated in 2007, doing my math, it's more than 15 years ago, that lists criteria, but again, does not define what that means. We have had a few schools come before us since I've been here, and we've taken the position that's consistent, I believe with DESI's guidance, I've pushed them for more, but haven't gotten any, that if they basically meet the criteria, essentially the checklist, then we should be approving it the way the statute reads, with clear indication that the approval here is not an endorsement or a recommendation or anything of this school that wants to open. So I don't know, this policy, one of the reasons we wanted to put it forward too, is to establish some process that we don't have published, and that's particular largely to the timeline, because the checklist for approval, we grabbed right from the DESI guidance, it's just more about timelines and what's expected, because it's a heavy lift when we do get them. The superintendent and superintendent designees have to do all the initial review, and then it comes before the school committee on their recommendation. Sometimes there's back and forth with the school trying to open if they're missing documents or they need more, so it can be kind of a heavy lift. So this clearly defines, or more clearly defines, like a timeline on which to do this process. So I don't know if anyone has any quick questions now, or if they kind of want to look into it further, happy to answer questions next time as well, or if no one has any, we can put on the consent agenda, we can kind of...
So all of these policy revisions and recommendations are to be considered as a first read tonight. Normal order, we would put them on the consent agenda, and I think we should go ahead and do that. And if anyone would like to ask a question, they can obviously pull it from the consent agenda per our normal procedure, so... Any questions at this point? All right. Thank you so much, Jill. Thank you for powering through with us. With that, we have concluded the posted business for tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be on Monday, December 4th. Kathy Shields will be chairing that meeting for us. I have an obligation, and will be joining remotely from that evening. So chairing remotely somehow doesn't seem to work, so thank you, Kathy. And everyone, I hope you have a wonderful and restorative Thanksgiving with family. So thank you to central staff, and a big thanks to everyone who stayed in here for the duration of our meeting. We very much appreciate it. Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.